All right. It is a few minutes after six o'clock. My pleasure to call to order the, what is today? The sixth, July 6th. Meeting of the Freeport Planning Board. Thanks, we have a few folks with us here, maybe a few more on Zoom. We may get another board member in person.
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
Quite all right, now we know that we are recording. So, without further ado, as usual, the first item is an information exchange. I was not able to make it to the last task force meeting, downtown task force meeting, so I will rely on Caroline to...
Were you at the last one? Okay, so the Downtown Vision Plan Implementation Group meets the fourth Thursday of every month on Zoom. Anyone can participate, there's a meeting link on the town's website.
What time?
Six o'clock, six to seven, last time it went long, we went till 7:15. But we try to be pretty efficient, so I think, you know, Sam and Rosemary had kind of given you an update before. You know, different boards and committee members or, you know, interested parties in the community went in and looked at the list of, I don't know, 70 or 80 things, ideas, action items presented at the end of the village. And people kind of plugged in what was of interest to them or what they might have already been working on. Like, for example, we plugged in, I think, looking at encouraging mixed use, looking at parking standards or streamlining, you know, some ordinance work. So the groups went through, there's about a dozen or so items that seem to be top priority. And so now we're really going through those a little bit further and seeing what the next couple of steps might be to implement them. I mean, some of them are really big ideas and some of them are, you know, more simple. So we're going through, kind of breaking them down, trying to match any potential funding and seeing if we have a staff person or a board that can actively support seeing the idea. I guess, kind of weed down a little more which ones are going to take top priority and which ones might be in another tier.
Can I just ask a question at this point? So was revising the downtown design standards, where did it sit on that priority list?
I'm gonna make you wait until item three. There was ordinance work in there, and so that does fall under there, but I'll give you a better update.
I was just wondering, is the sense that it was a high priority or a low priority?
That's a different priority that overlaps with something else that I'll get to for you guys. So we're gonna kind of work, Dan Pilch, Councilor Pilch, Mary Davis from FDDC, the town engineer, and I are gonna go through the list, kind of flesh it out a little more, and I believe ultimately present it to council to see what there's priority for putting our resources in. You know, a lot of things are going to be time and money. If we go for projects that need grants, we'll need a match, so there's many different factors. And a lot of these projects will be multi-steps and multi-years. So that's kind of where we are in that. Item two is update on items reviewed by the project review board. They had their first application for downtown housing for the lot across from the parking garage that L.L.B. owns next to former Yankee Candle on the corner of Depot Street and Mill Street. They're proposing 67 apartments down there. We also did receive an application for a smaller housing project of 25 units on this parcel next to Town Hall. That will be kind of...
Right here.
Right here, yeah, the dirt where the button shop used to be years ago.
Didn't they do the farmer's market there?
Yeah, the farmer's market is there right now. So that will go to project review for conceptual introduction. On the 20th, the project review board also approved some outdoor seating for Freeport Oyster Bar. They wanted, originally their hope was to take advantage of the new provision that the planning board had adopted for seasonal accessory outdoor seating. The structure they wanted was substantial enough to require a building permit, therefore couldn't be considered temporary and seasonal. So they came in, got approval for some outdoor seating facing Main Street on the patio that was built in front, and they also have a covered structure out back in the parking lot where they've put additional outdoor seating. And then number three, we'll answer part of Mitch's question. The town council did approve the budget for the town of Freeport. In there, we had additional funding for a comp plan. So we now have, I believe it's 100, about 125, 150 to complete that project. So that just needs staff to have time to type off the RFP so we can get that project underway. Also, and there was a request for design work. To answer your question, yes, the Downtown Vision Plan did flag some ordinance work, some of which would be pertaining to design. Previously, before the vision, the project review board and the planning board had both flagged that we needed to update our design review ordinance in another overlay district we have downtown. So that work, the $40,000 will cover a large portion of getting the design review standards updated, the overlay district standards cleaned up, and incorporate some of the vision for downtown Freeport, if that makes sense.
So there's 40,000 for design?
$40,000 is for all ordinance work.
All ordinance work, and then the comp plan has...
I can't remember if it's 120, I think it's 125, if not, it's 150.
Okay, but the 40,000 is separate?
Yes, we have two separate, there are, so anything we want done for ordinance work for the coming year would have to come out of that. There are a couple other projects I think we're gonna need some professional input on, so we would probably spend...
And we have to spend it in the fiscal year, right? So by June 30th?
So no for the comp plan because that's a large project, so it's in the capital budget. That will probably take at least two years. The ordinance work has to be spent because it's in the operating budget by June 30, 2023. So that needs to, we need to get the RFP out there.
Cool.
Question?
Well, I have a comment or something, I mean, I guess my thought about, I was watching the project review board last week, and they have jurisdiction over that project, and the project seems conforming with what everybody kind of hoped to put there in most ways. However, there was one complaint that I think that the developers will address, that it didn't sort of react to the vision plan in look and feel, basically, in design standards.
Sorry, what didn't react to the?
So the project is 67 units, it's three stories high, and it's kind of modern. In their very, very first, nobody should get, it was just a very early conceptual thought. And they felt like it was very responsive to the existing design standards for the downtown, but not necessarily consistent with the downtown visioning.
Okay, then this was feedback from the project review board?
The, yes.
Yeah, during the review of the application.
Feedback from the project review board.
To the applicant, okay.
To the applicant, and the applicant said, gee, we weren't really that tuned into it, and we will happily catch up and try to respond. So probably problem averted, but it made me think, gee, that's one of the most critical pieces of property in town, it will affect the vision a lot. And if there's design standards and it takes a year to do, and all of a sudden five projects pop, that made me nervous. I want to bring up one other point before I stop, which is, it's a three-story building. Arguably, that piece of property could take four, but the current standards would not allow that. So they tried to, they want to move it along, they want a quick approval, and so they made it conforming. But gee, if we were quicker about it, they might say, really, we could do four, we could do cool things. You see?
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure how to get, almost no matter how we slice it, there's going to be some sort of transition where we're working through new, you know, the visions come out and we're working through the process and the public process is inherently slow. And, yeah, 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 so, but I think that's an interesting point, I think, and actually, that's a very good, very good sort of case study right there with levels of the building. I think, you know, that's the kind of thing where we could say, all right, we know this is coming, we could conceivably make that change fairly quickly and efficiently. It would still take a few meetings and a couple months, but...
Yeah, so I see there being like, they're kind of two separate buckets because the height regulation, as you know, we just amended it within the past year, I think, to go three stories up to 45 feet. The height is in the zoning ordinance. The appearance and compatibility and following compatibility with the downtown and the architectural historically significant buildings is in design review ordinance. If that doesn't have a height number, that has like scale and compatibility. Zoning, 100%, you could change it, could come under your purview. You know, we, it's interesting, when we talked about how we had concerns from the public about going to 45 feet, there were concerns about that. Through the visioning work, people seem to be open. So if you guys wanted to talk about height, I think you could do that much simpler under design review. You know, I've had some people in say, yeah, we're good with height if they add green space or, you know, if they meet other standards. So that's something we need to like carefully look at. Design review actually says it can go under council with input from the planning board. I think the intent is that the...
Who controls the design review? I just don't...
Design review says it can be amended by the council with, the planning board can give input. In this case, because it's more complicated how it ties into the overlay district, which is a whole nother conversation we could have that we've talked about in the past, that's gonna come under the planning board, so I think we would do it all at once with the planning board taking the lead, getting input from the vision plan and design review. Design review would, I think, at the end of the day, typically get us a building that's compatible and has some traditional New England features. As written, you cannot get four or five stories out of it because, again, the height is a zoning ordinance regulation. And you make a good observation that there is going to be a time of transition with design review and some of the appearance, but we're also finding that in our process. Like, we talked a couple years ago about this parking lot overlay, which went somewhere else because it wasn't what it needed to be, but it looked at amending the process for this redevelopment. And we're quickly seeing that our current subdivision process is very clunky, I would say, and some of its steps for some of these redevelopment projects. But again, it's just a matter of can't keep up with everything going on in this vision. That's, we're still waiting for the final edited draft and stuff's coming in because people are excited and have been following what's going on.
That developer may want speed more than anything, so he may not care at all. But if he knew that there was a possibility for it to go taller, he might want to play. And that actually might even create the consent to make sure that...
They would have had options, having right title and interest in the property, they could have applied for a zoning ordinance amendment on their own. They're also in a district that would have allowed for them to approach the town for a contract zone. They chose not to take that route, so it went with three stories. But they had other options, other alternative options or tools available to them.
Right, I think it is true, you know, if that fourth story were a make or break to the economics of the project, they, yeah.
It's only like, but you could say, I mean, people want affordable housing. You could say, we'll give you a fourth story if you make smaller units up, you know, add a few, something like that. And if there's any property in town that could take a fourth story, it's that specific piece of ground that is the easiest to...
So it's right over here?
It's the north side of Depot, so when you're on Depot facing the theater...
Yeah, behind the Timberland Building. It's basically down behind the Congo Church.
Behind the church.
That area over towards...
Got you, got you, got you.
Yeah, I think part of looking at the height is when we, like, if you do a contract zone, then it can be property-specific, but if we look at the zoning, we're looking at all of Village Commercial One. So the planning board, we need to look at it and craft it in a way...
Right, where it's, you don't...
That makes sense, given the properties or certain conditions.
So did he choose not to go down the contract road for any specific reason, or?
They chose to bring an application in under current standards.
I think they, I don't think they were super tuned in to any of the visioning work. And so they just thought they knew that people wanted housing downtown. They thought this is an opportunity, we'll do it under existing zoning and be as cooperative as we can.
So I think, yeah, it'd be interesting to see what they do next month. I think I would personally be in favor, you know, I would be more than happy to look. If they come back and say, hey, we've seen the visioning, we've taken a look at it, it seems like another story, would, you know, I think the board would be...
Yeah, last I knew, they weren't interested, I'd asked them if they weren't interested.
So then it may be a non-issue, but I think, I think, I think the point about, you know, the process inherently being slower than people want to move, I mean, it's the way it's gonna be.
Well, we may as well do what we can to go as fast as we can, that's all we can do.
Yep, yep, and it's always gonna be a balancing act. Good to know that we have $40,000 and one year to spend it. That'll be good, a good exercise in efficiency for the board. I'd like to move on to item number two, which is approval of minutes from the June 1st planning board meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at that. I think everyone who is here tonight was at that meeting.
Correct.
So that gives us a quorum. Robert was not there, is that, I'm pointing at the screen over here.
Yeah, he was not, Robert was not there.
So Robert will be recused from this vote. Unless there are any proposed amendments to the meeting, do I hear a motion to approve them as written?
So move.
Second.
Excellent, all in favor? Oh, we have to do a roll call, right, because it's hybrid?
Um, yeah, let's just do a roll call.
Okay. Uh, Rosemary?
Rosemary.
Mitch?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
I vote aye, that's four ayes.
And Robert will notice.
And Robert will...
Excused.
Excused, excused. Excellent. Moving on to item number three. A continued discussion of possible amendments to Section 104 definitions and Section 514, off-street parking and loading of the Freeport zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking requirements for residential uses in the VC-1 Village Commercial One zoning district. Caroline, do you mind giving us a quick recap?
Sure, I was going to rewind a little bit because we had some questions at the last meeting. So, let's see. So we talked about this at the last meeting, and we talked about some numbers, and then we kind of had a little crash course in shared parking. So Freeport's unique in that we have a whole bunch of different properties going through our downtown with different owners. So, you know, people always say, oh, I love coming to Freeport because I can use the town parking. Well, you're using parking, but chances are it's probably not owned by the town. It's owned by a private individual that happens to own a parking lot downtown. We have a shared parking system so that you can come to Freeport. You can pretty much, there are some exceptions, park anywhere you want, leave your car for the day, and then walk around and do whatever you want to do while you're here. The program is incentivized to businesses. If you participate in shared parking and don't restrict it to a certain customers only, then you get a lower requirement. If you choose to limit it for your business only, then you get a higher requirement. Back in the day, like Town Hall, you can't park here during normal business hours. You know, certain uses that weren't retail or restaurant did function a little different, but for the most part, it's a shared parking system. Some people have parking on site, some people don't have parking, and some people have parking on another property. If you're doing a project in Freeport and you don't have parking, you don't want to buy a parking lot. If someone else has extra parking beyond what the ordinance requires, they can lease it. So in your packet, digital packet, you have the existing parking section, and then we also put an excerpt from the traffic and parking ordinance just to show you how leased parking works. So we have two maps that Cecilia worked on for you. They didn't print great, so we're showing them on screen. So this red line going around here is just the Village Commercial One zoning district. And this is just a snapshot so we can see what we have downtown for residential. You can see that we don't have a lot, I'd say, you know, it looks like maybe we have one or two dozen properties that are considered residential. The purple are mixed-use properties, so those are properties that have at least one commercial and one residential, at least one residential unit in the same structure. You have a couple of the orange, which are multifamily, are multiple-unit properties, so that would be two or more units. And then we have a couple, I think there's about 10 or so historically of the yellow properties, which are existing single families in the downtown. So that was just kind of a interesting exercise so you could see what kind of residential uses we already have mixed in downtown. A lot of the single families have driveways on them, but some of the other mixed-use properties, you know, have been there for a long time, and they don't necessarily all have parking on the site. Then we have one other map for you. Andy asked the question at the last meeting to kind of better understand how the parking works. So this is just kind of a... Sorry, this is not... It's clearly not showing you my screen.
Just want to get Zoom sorted out, I guess this is our...
Ah, there we go. Let's do it again. It's not, okay. Okay, I'm not gonna touch anything. Okay, so here you have a map, this is just a sampling so you can, of a couple colors, just so you can understand how the parking works. Because Andy asked this question at the last meeting, and it was a good question. So if we took a map of the parcels in the Village Commercial One District and colored them by owner, it's a little overwhelming. So we took a sampling so you can see kind of the idea in shared parking. So, for example, we have a large landowner in downtown Freeport. This is not gonna cooperate for us tonight. You can see that in the, kind of in the center, they have the green. I'm gonna do it the old-fashioned way.
With a cord?
There you go. Okay, so you can see, for example, all these kind of Kelly Green parcels here in the center. This is all one property owner that owns all of these. Their buildings are clearly up here, but they also own parking lots to meet their requirements scattered down in the area of Depot Street. So they own parking on one, or they own structures and parking on one side of Main Street, but then they have additional parking down on Depot Street. Next, again, you have this property owner here, Schulsky Properties. They own like Timberland, the Polo Building, they own some structures on Main Street, you'll see. They own some on Bow, but their parking is actually the parking lot outside of Town Hall here, the lower parking lot, and then they have a parking lot. So the parking meeting, the uses are in the zone, but they're not always on the same site. Again, this was just to give you a sampling of how people's parking is already separated from their business, which I think is kind of a weird concept for people to understand.
So do they own that lot, did they want to put the housing on? Is that their lot there?
So the lot in the green is, they have a purchase and sale agreement with L.L.B.
Oh, this is in the green, okay.
Yep, this is owned by L.L.B.
Andrew, the other one that she was talking about across from the fire station is next to that parking lot. To the left.
Yeah, you can, yep, the yellow, and then the orange up here is that where Patagonia North faces. They have a little bit of parking on site, but then they have a parking lot out back near CBS.
They own the pharmacy building as well, don't they? Don't Feinberg own both of those?
Yeah, it's actually three lots that they own, the parking behind the pharmacy. There's a lot line going through there. And then the other one is Lobster Cooker and the Gap. They actually own the RV parking lot and some vacant lot out here. So that was just to give you a sampling based upon some of the questions Andy had at the last meeting.
So on the 25 lots they're gonna put on, or right on the, we're talking about right on the corner, main left?
Right up in here, yep.
And their parking will be?
So the plan they have presented, part of it will be dependent on what the planning board does with parking. They show parking on site, if they need additional parking, they could try to get it through the shared parking system if the ordinance has changed. But again, if you come to town, you can choose to park wherever you chose to park tonight because that's how we have it set up.
So Schutzy owns the lower parking lot behind, right over here, doesn't he?
Yes, you know the parking lot, like where Town Hall employees park, it's like...
Yeah, where you drive out.
Yeah, it's a couple tiers, they own all that.
Do they own all that over there? So we drive through their land to get out?
Yes. And then they own a whole bunch of parking down on Depot Street. Other questions, or was that helpful to...
Yeah, I think that's helpful to see.
Where's the town's lot on Depot?
Oh, good question, so the town sold...
The old Egnol lot.
They sold their land to the community center, they have rights.
Oh, it's rolled in with the community center?
Yeah, they have, the town has rights to like 20 spaces in there, but, so the town has like rights to 20 spaces in there, the town has some parking on Town Hall, which is up here in the blue, and then we have a little bit, Bartal, behind Bartal. And then this is that Howard Place parking lot that a lot of the high school kids use, the town owns that. So the town owns less than 10% of the off-street parking downtown.
And that blue...
Oh, we have the train, actually, we have the train station, I forgot to add that in. Yeah, we're the blue.
The blue is Freeport on.
Freeport.
Yeah, and when we count parking spaces, we don't really count, like, the public safety parking in our off-site counts, because you're not really gonna park down there.
And the town is operating under shared parking, is that correct?
Um, yeah.
Or they just open to the public?
I would say, public safety is kind of its own thing, a lot of people don't park there just because of nature.
But I mean, like, up at the end of Howard Place up there and by the train station?
Yes, that's, yep, that's shared parking. So we have a little bit of parking in there that's meeting our requirement because we do have the Bartal Library. We have a couple spaces back here behind Bartal.
They used to have their own.
And then we lease some, yeah, we lease some parking.
Is that because we leased out the Bartal? At that point, we had to provide parking for it?
I can't remember, it's not very big, they don't provide a lot. But yeah, most of this parking in Howard Place has been available for other people to lease throughout the years.
So Caroline, can you walk us through the proposed...
Yeah, I'm gonna come back up there, are you guys good with the maps here? Okay. See if we can get Robert back on screen, I don't...
Oops. I have no adapter for you to track.
Okay.
This is the one that was working before, sorry, I forgot about this.
No, that's okay, it worked last week when I sat down there.
May I ask about the derosures? Are you using the parking lot now, or they're, that, you know, buffered out? Is that going to be a permanent thing?
Oh, oh, the parklet?
Yes.
The parklet is a temporary seasonal installation, it was part of like a pilot project with the Downtown Vision.
Right.
That's sort of a separate, those spaces are separate too, the street parking is kind of a separate.
Yeah, when we talk about this, we're only talking about off-street parking. The on-street parking is regulated, like, complete streets under the traffic and parking ordinance. What do you want me to do here?
Although you think that...
I turned it on to mute.
The number would count, you'd sort of want to know what that number is.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
How many, like, how many spaces are street parking? I mean, it's relevant to the whole issue of how much is there.
Yeah, when we talk about parking requirements, they're always off-street, and they have to meet it with off-street. I believe the exception is, the community center use can count a couple that are on-street.
Derosure's is grandfathered, so they don't have any parking.
Yeah, Derosure's is grandfathered, so I don't believe that. We have a couple people that don't have any parking.
Well, but assuming that you, but still, how many spa, are there, is there a large number of spaces?
We don't have a good count of on-street parking. Part of that is, it's, a lot of it's not striped, so like, you can't, I mean, we could have somebody measure and divide and calculate it that way, but you can't look at an aerial photo and just count it because there's some striped on like Bow Street, but out here, there's parking, and it's not all striped. I think if we look at the parking downtown, district-wide, big picture, I 100% agree with you. We need to look at that, we need to make sure it's all marked right, and then we need to get a count to see how that would play in if we're gonna consider...
If you're gonna take some away, we better make sure we know how much we're...
I don't remember the planning board really getting into that in the past when they made the huge discussion, do you?
I think the...
I might have a ballpark number, but people have to meet it off-site.
Well, remember that the visioning process may start eating away at those parking spaces too, because they may want to widen sidewalks and have less...
Yes, yes.
I think my recollection of it is that the town specifically, many years ago, the town specifically pursued a strategy of meeting parking needs with off-street parking. And so the on-street parking has really never factored into any of those equations, and there really isn't very much of it. And people, the people who use it, use it at their peril because it's, a lot of it's 15 minutes or, so I...
If there isn't much of it, then it's not...
Yeah, I think it's kind of a, you know, there's a few useful spots further down Main Street, like between Bean and Sherman's, say, and over by the post office. And I really, I think we, we don't, I think we'd be getting into the weeds to start factoring that in at this point without better data.
Yeah, I mean, land use-wise, if someone comes in for a use, they have to meet it off-street. We, or the planning board, made significant reductions to parking requirements a couple years ago, I think. I think if we want to look universally at lowering them throughout the district for all uses, I think we would want to look at that and have it be a factor, because we already have hundreds and hundreds of surplus parking spaces that could go away, and I think.
Yeah, I think we, I think we take a measured approach and see, see where we end up. That's mine.
I'm not going to touch anything. Okay, thank you.
As part of the downtown visioning, weren't we going to talk about on-street parking for?
It's interesting, I got that question today. So I went back and looked. I didn't see it, that it made it into the action table. It did say to look at a universal design for Main Street, which some of their designs showed parking, but I didn't, other than assess parking, I didn't see anything specifically.
And I remember walking around with the rocks and a couple people and talking about, you know, as a, so as you drive into town, there's no parking on either side, and it sort of just looks like a thoroughfare instead of slowing people down, sort of to say, okay, we're in the village now. And I was a kid who was parking all up and down the street, and we took a lot of it off when it was busy, and it doesn't mean we can't.
Almost makes it slower and friendlier.
Well, because my theory is you drive down Exchange Street, and it's one lane that's very busy, and everybody wants to be there, and there's never a parking problem. You just go to the next place if it's busy, but.
The on-street parking also wouldn't be under the purview of you guys. I think it would be a factor if we look at parking. We'd want to know, but it comes under complete streets. We have a whole ordinance that regulates what's where.
I'd like to focus on this at this point.
Okay, so want me to walk you through what you have here for language? So in reviewing the language, Cecilia had a good catch. She looked at the definition of shared parking, and it seemed to strike non-residential activities from that. But yet, the parking table had a shared and non-shared standard already for residential. So we proposed to strike that, to clean that language up. Walking, Mitch had asked to see it in language format. So this was the first attempt to get it in language for you guys to consider. And I kind of put the number out there for a starting point for discussion. If you want to go through, we'll go through and talk about it. If you go forward with this, we would have a little more internal review and some legal review. But anyways, so it's, sorry, I should have numbered these.
It's over here, right?
Yeah, on page three, Village Commercial One for shared parking. We would propose to add a new standard for multiple family dwelling. That would be three or more units. And mixed-use developments, again, that's a structure with a residential and commercial, or multiple uses in one building, are allowed to use a combination. There's a typo. It should be of shared and non-shared parking to meet the requirement for a property. So if they wanted to calculate some of it at a higher rate to have it on-site, to say, you know, Sam's Apartments only, but then they wanted to participate in the shared parking to meet the rest of. Yep, I think, we hear people say we don't need more parking. So we know that even if we don't require it, so far, anyone that's approached just about residential, they are going to have some parking on the site. They are going to want it. But allowing them to use a combination would allow them to participate in the shared parking system, not necessarily have to create more impervious area that's needed or create more parking than what is needed today.
However, this will add parking demand.
Yeah.
Six, I mean, and this, that project was 60 apartments with only 25 spaces, I believe.
I've looked at a lot of plans lately. I can't remember what that count was.
I'm pretty sure it was like 60 something and 20 something. So it was not close.
You know, we count parking, always looking for volunteers. We count parking spaces, or I should say Cecilia counts a lot more parking spaces. We've all taken our turns, but it's been years, you know, at least weekdays since we have seen all parking fill, especially since we have the parking garage, which has over 500 parking spaces. We haven't seen that full. So I think, you know, although COVID has changed patterns, the traditional intent was that you would wake up, you would get in your car, and you would go to work. Or if you live downtown, you might even walk to work, so you might not have two cars. But, you know, there will be some times when people are home and parking at night when everything else is closed, and there's all the parking. But I think there were some good points raised at the last meeting and the conversation, that as we, as we introduce multifamily residential, which is already permitted, and have more residences, we might have people parking lots overnight. And so there could be concerns about snow removal or, you know, stuff like that. But I think as we bring residential in, we're going to face different types of growing pains, like noise.
If they participate in the shared parking, they'd be paying into it. The landlord would be getting money for it and would be aware of.
Right, I think at that point, the landlords say, hey, you're going to park in this overnight? You get a, we have a snow situation, sort of like Portland does or something. I think that's, we don't necessarily need to worry about that at this point.
I don't think we need to worry about it, but we, we want to acknowledge it, that it could be, you know, snowing down there. But you're right, like, if, and by doing shared parking, you're going to agree that you're going to keep it open and striped and maintain. So what you have in here, you have the two tables for parking. First is the shared table. So we currently go off of bedrooms and attempts to not make any of the existing single or two-family non-conforming. I just clarified, that was for one and two-family. And then we added the new standard for multiple family dwellings and mixed-use development. I put the mixed-use development in there since that was a goal of the vision plan, and it was something that the planning board flagged as wanting to be supportive of.
Well, not necessarily the same thing. Because residential, you know what that burden is. But if it's mixed-use, what if it's big commercial, you know, operation on the first floor?
So the dwelling in the mixed-use would meet the dwelling requirement.
And the commercial would meet the commercial, and they can both do it onsite and offsite.
I think, actually, Mitch, that's a really good point. We might want to say, just to be super clear, and the dwellings in the mixed-use development.
Right, right.
Yep, that's a good.
And dwellings within mixed-use developments, yeah. I think that's.
Yeah, I think, again, just to be super clear, I think that's a good.
Why is it one here and 1.25 there?
We're going to get to that, yeah. So at the last meeting, and again, we, we talked about one. And so the debate was, do we start at one, or do we start lower? So I put one in for shared, because that's kind of what you talked about the last meeting. But they also said, you also gave me feedback that we still want to encourage shared, like, that would be the preference. So if you don't want to share, which would probably be your parking on-site, you would have a little bit higher requirement. So we looked at a couple of the other uses. It seemed that Cecilia did the math. I can't remember. Like 20 to 40% higher seemed to be the non-shared.
But, but the language doesn't seem to make that clear. So on the left page, that one parking space per residential unit is shared.
There's two, it's, the heading is over here.
Yeah, the heading.
For shared parking. We're all talking about for shared parking. Then we're talking about not using.
We could actually make, no, we could make that stand out more.
Make it a single table.
Yeah, yeah.
If you made it a single table with the same things in the left. We have a chipmunk in here.
Hey, what? All right, we're pausing the meeting. What is going on in here? Is there really a chipmunk in the building? Okay, Brett, are you on that? Because we don't need an alarm set off by a chipmunk tonight. Can you close the door too? Okay, sorry about that.
Are we chipmunk herding?
That's right.
Oh, I hear it.
I think the chipmunk's under control.
Chipmunk alarm. All right, other people are worrying about the chipmunk.
We can look at the formatting of this section.
Yeah, I think one table would be pretty cool to have just shared and not shared right next to each other.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a stab at it. So then for shared, and V.C. One for single and two-family, again, kept it the same in efforts to not make anything not conform, accidentally not conforming, and then added it higher for multifamily. Also want to know.
Can I be slightly dumb here?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But like, okay, so if you have 50 apartments, and you have 25 on-site, and you want to share the rest, how does, how do these two tables relate to each? How do you do that?
Yeah, so essentially, we'd have to take it and say, okay, if you have, let's just use 10, because it's easy. You know, if you have 10 units, you need 10 spaces. You're going to have five on-site. So we're going to say, five of them are going to meet it with the non-shared, and then the rest would calculate at the shared value. So it times the unit, times the requirement. You would, we do that for.
If they're unshared, I want to put some on-site just for us, then if I have five sites, five spaces, that only is good for four apartments, right? Because I need 1.25. So now I need six more in shared. I'm really getting 11 spaces, because I would have five on-site and six off-site.
Yes, and so we, for any use, we add it. So for example, like next door, they have a couple of apartments. So we calculate for each apartment, and then we calculate for the office, and then we calculate for the retail, so it's.
These would be great math problems for the high school.
For the high school.
They are great math problems.
I totally get it. It's all like.
Bob wants, and, you know.
Now, the only question is 1.25 the right number, right? That's the only question.
That's basically what we're worried about, yeah.
So that is the, yep, so it's really the number. So we talked about, the recommendation of the village was to go to zero. We know that's trend. Staff didn't feel like that was the right solution right now for Freeport. I think if we look at parking holistically going forward, we know that the two is too high for residential. It can, is a limiting factor in development. But I'd really look for input from you guys as to what you feel the right number is.
I would, I would say, and it's not suggested here, but I would propose saying, you know, two-bedroom unit maybe stays at 1.75. And this is in, on shared parking, sorry. I'm in the shared parking table. And just say, two-bedroom unit, 1.75 parking spaces, and then just nothing after that. Any more is, it just stays at 1.75. I don't see, you know, it's like adding, because if you have five bedrooms, like they're probably not, you know.
So you would want to go off on the requirement?
I would just want to say, two-bedroom unit, two bedrooms and up. I would say 1.75 parking spaces. So if you have a three-bedroom unit, you don't need two spaces. You still need 1.75. If you have a six-bedroom unit, you still need 1.75 spaces. That's what I'm saying, like, I don't.
You'd rather go higher.
No.
Right now, the proposal in front of you is one, regardless of bedrooms.
I'm not, sorry, I'm talking about single-family and two-family. I'm saying we further reduce while we're in here.
Oh, 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 sorry, okay.
I'm up above.
Oh, oh, now we're following.
We're talking about two different standards.
It's 1.75 for two bedrooms and above.
Yeah, I'm saying that we.
And stop right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be okay with that, because you wouldn't make anything none. I didn't want to drop that and make stuff non-conforming, but.
But I think if we're opening up.
No, I think you could do it that way. Yeah, you wouldn't make.
We're opening up the area to more.
Yep.
So anyway.
Well, again, you're not, you're not, that's really not.
Is it going to make a two-bedroom?
You're not really going to have that here in the village, because single-family is not a permitted use.
Right.
In the V.C. One, it's not a permitted use. Only the existing single families are permitted use as of a certain date, but you can't have new single families.
That's right, okay.
And I don't believe it.
Just made it legally non-conforming.
Two flex.
This entire thing is.
Yeah, so that's.
So, okay, so, so never mind, sorry.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I think one parking space per residential unit is fine. I would go lower, but I think that's a decent.
Well, and that, like I said, I would rather, I gave it to you with the number that I thought was kind of in the middle, a little bit higher. I would rather, if you guys want to go lower, you can tweak it down, but I didn't want to put a low number.
The part that makes me nervous about the lower, I think everybody thinks the lower is better, and that we don't need the parking, really. But we don't own the parking. And that's the part that gets me. Like if you were to make it zero, and you were to put 60 apartments in there, you really are bringing 100 cars in. It will be 100 cars.
Yeah, but I think there's.
And then they're going to be on somebody else's land overnight, and there's not, you know.
That's right. But I think that, you know.
That's how it works today for other uses.
And I think there's also a point at which, I mean, if suddenly parking is at a huge premium in Freeport, then people, I mean, the market will respond to that.
Yeah, but what, how are they going to respond to it?
Can they buy 100? Can they share?
Because I don't think that this is, I don't think that we're going to build so many residential units all at once, that it's going to become a problem overnight. I mean, I think if we build one of these, and it starts to tip in favor of, or it starts to tip toward parking getting more sought-after and more expensive, then the people who still own parking lots would, you know, then they would think that it just.
Of a garage.
Yeah, it tips the scales, right, it tips the scale, you know. So the, I think there's a point at which the market steps in and responds to these concerns.
I would see this really as an interim solution. We know two is too high. We know it's not the norm in other places. We know we're unique. There's been a lot of discussion on parking. It's shared, we don't own it all. We need to look at the bigger picture. We also know there's hundreds of parking spaces sitting in Freeport that people think are extra, but they're, they're just there because they're there. We're not saying you have to keep them there, because they're not meeting requirements. So if you look at lowering it for residential, if this is because of the vision, people wanted to see multifamily. So if you lower it to this now, I think in a couple of years, as we see some parking lots get built out, I definitely think we need to holistically look at the parking, again, in Freeport, for everything in Village Commercial One.
Can we also put in somehow altruistically, we're trying to get people not to have so many cars? Where the breeze, the trains, right? So we have, we're allowing that. That's, I think, not.
Yeah, you, yes, you are near public transit.
Promoting that more.
And the walkability.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, all right, just to put, just for the sake of argument, what if we, what if we lower to three-quarters of a parking space per residential unit in the shared parking, in the shared parking and go to one in the onsite parking? So we retain a similar sort of proportion.
And then on shared.
Yeah.
So you're saying one per unit?
In, if it's onsite, one per unit, if it's onsite.
Nonshared doesn't have to be onsite. I mean, you could own a whole parking lot and not share it. Sorry, I just want to clarify that.
Nonshared, yeah, I guess I'm assuming that generally people would do it onsite, but yeah.
I still just have a concern with counting shared parking someplace without really knowing where it is and how it's going to be handled in the future. I mean, we make these plans and we're going to revisit this in two years. I mean, it's not like Manjo Hill or Portland with the street parking and a snowstorm, you can go down parking the park down there for the snowstorm. We don't have on-street parking here to suck up, you know, the extra parking for residences that want to park on the street.
You need to keep the doors open.
They're trying to catch the chipmunk, I think.
Yeah, we have to keep them open for a public meeting. Sorry.
Do we get like a chipmunk clause where we, where we're, we're not in violation of the law if we have it shut for a couple of minutes due to chipmunks?
Oh, my gosh.
It's reasonable. If the town really gets sued over that, that would be kind of sad.
They get an exemption.
Yeah, everyone will understand.
Okay, and we can't see Robert again, I apologize.
Uh-oh, Robert's gone.
No, I can see Robert, just you guys can't see Robert.
I don't like the yo-yoing, you know, like we'll go down too low, then we go back up.
But we are not.
I think we will keep going down, probably.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're in danger of that here. I really don't. I think it's, I think one, one parking space per dwelling unit in a, in a multifamily home is still.
I think that's fine.
I like one, I'm a little nervous about going below one.
But you'd have it onsite, but we don't have a, I mean, I guess we could put.
This is allowing them to buy shared parking.
You don't require parking for any use onsite downtown now.
Yeah, but downtown has been almost all commercial since all the residents left when, you know, in the eighties.
So is your proposal to make a requirement for onsite parking?
I'd just like to, you know, well, down here on the side of the hill, they could put it under, you know? Down here on, on Depot Street, they could, they could put it, Mill Street, they could put it under the building, you know?
Yeah, I think, you know, cost is a factor in that.
Except he doesn't know how he can go that tall because nobody told him.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
You mean dig under or?
Well, you could always dig under.
You could put parking underneath.
Put parking underneath, I mean, there's, you go into Paul and you go down some of those places, they have parking underneath and there's, and there's an elevator. So you can, there's a lift, so you can stack two cars in one space.
Yes.
Down there by Ben K's and Chip Yad down there, you can, you see the cars, one on top of the other. You drive it in, you pick it up, you pack your other one under it.
They both have to be Lamborghinis for that, but. The.
Make a deeper thing.
The, sorry, I was commenting on that neighborhood now.
Do you want to see if Robert has any color?
This is a little strange comment, this is a little strange comment.
Robert, yeah.
Neighborhood.
We need another voice.
Change a lot. Um, yeah, Robert, do you have thoughts on this?
I have lots, but I don't think, we'll go over them all right now, but I, I, I generally think it's a fluid situation. We've talked about parking for how long. In fact, what's the premise of this conversation now? What's the goal that we want to, we want to fix? You know, what's, why are we talking about this? Is it to try and promote development, residential development in the area? And so we're thinking maybe lowering a little bit, that threshold would provide that. If that's the case, that's, I agree, you know, I want to do what we can to promote residential development downtown. But it's, it's, it's confusing, it's a, the whole shared parking idea is confusing for people and it's not something we can just fix. We can just, let's have a conversation, put it in the zoning ordinance and we're good. It, it's going to keep coming up depending on how much resident, residential development takes place, depending on what kind of development. So I think it's just something that we're probably going to be dealing with for a while. And I think we should have some stated goals and what we want, the, what those are, and then just try and figure out the parking to meet those. And then just see how it, how it works out, you know, in the years to come and, and tackle it and update it.
To, to, to that end, I, I see this as, we know with the planning board has a lot on its plate over the next year plus, right? To do the comprehensive plan, to do, to deal with the visioning, you know, ordinance changes that are, you know, made necessary or at least desirable by the visioning statement, there's a lot to do. We are not going to totally overhaul the parking situation in this town in the next year or two. So I think I would propose either amending this or taking, taking these suggestions, suggested amendments as written or potentially lowering to 1.75 for shared and one for, for not, non-shared parking as, I mean, that was my suggestion. I don't mean to shove it to anyone.
It requires two, 1.75 or two.
But I think the, yeah, I mean, we're, we're trying to, the, the idea is to lower it, is to make it sort of more in line with modern parking standards and promote, you know, sustainability and get costs under control for, for developers and try to increase development downtown, get more residential units downtown, which is something that we've identified and heard from all sorts of different people in town, that that is a desirable goal. So I would propose moving this forward either as written or with the slight amendment that I suggested. Happy to hear other thoughts, but I would like to move this.
Do you want to take public comment or not really?
Sure, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear if anyone thinks, if anyone has a strong preference, one way or another, toward as written or even lower.
I don't mind one per unit, but I really have trouble with sort of shared parking in residences because it's not like a commercial situation where the customer comes, he might only come once or twice a year, he might only come once a week. You have shared parking for residential uses, those cars might be there, you know, more often, let's put it that way.
Would it, would it sort of help to make the shared parking requirement and the non-shared parking requirement the same? So there's no incentive for shared parking?
Well, I just don't understand, you know, we, we look at commercial, retail, whatever you want to call it, shared parking, that's a different pattern use of the parking spot per se. You know, when you got a store uptown and somebody's coming and shopping and then they're gone for the day, they might not be back for a week. That type of shared parking to providing parking for a permanent use, which is a dwelling. So if they have two cars and they go on vacation for a month to Europe, those two cars are going to be in that shared parking and that's never going to, it doesn't flow the same as for a commercial use.
From a, from a sort of functional perspective, if we.
I just don't know, shared parking works with residences.
I understand that point, but what, what do we do about it is my question, like what would the, what would the proposed solution be? So if we removed the parking requirement from the shared parking table entirely and said multi or multifamily or mixed use developments are not eligible for shared parking, then they're required to meet all of their parking on spaces that they own, right? But it does, it still doesn't put it onsite, so if we want to.
Well, I think they need to be designated.
They could meet some onsite. What you would then have is you could have them buying parking lots and blocking them, you know.
Right.
Like buy a parking lot somewhere else in town, which is going to.
That's a distance from the place, that's not how it's going to go. The people are going to park in the shared lots.
I, I still think that the, the developers are the, are the ones who are the best equipped to handle the parking in there. You know, I, I think, you know, if somebody wants to.
Yes, you could not let them do shared or they could buy parking lots.
What happens today? What, what, right now, if we do nothing, they, are they allowed to use shared parking?
Um, I would say the ordinance conflicts between the definition and the table, so we want to clean that up. But the way it's written, you can't combine, it's like one or the other, so.
But today you could build a 60-unit apartment and do all shared parking. If it's two units, you just would have to do 120 units.
The first parking, the first project that we've seen come in, they were proposing to get rights to a parking lot, which they would probably block off for their use only because there happens to be a parking lot available in proximity and then they would have some onsite. You could see it tie up other parking within a certain district.
They would have to do that, right now it would all be dedicated, one way onsite or offsite.
You had to do one or the other, shared or not shared. Or they could do shared and let anyone park there, but we hear from all the developers, they don't want to do that.
Wait, but could they do shared and build none onsite?
Again, I think if we, the ordinance conflicts itself, the table presents it like you could, a definition of shared parking calls out residential.
Yep.
It, it accepts residential.
The definition says shared doesn't have residential, but the standard, there's a standard for it. There's an error in the ordinance, I would say. Today you can't mix them together, though.
So we're trying to allow mixing to allow more flexibility to promote development downtown. That's one part of this.
We agreed that the shared, the, the idea of shared parking is not going anywhere. Is that, is that here to stay?
I would agree with you on that.
Okay, so if that's, that's here to stay, then we're dealing with those parameters. And we want to figure out, how do we get residential development within our community with shared parking, right?
So I think the next question, yeah, the next question is that.
Develop, but you can't utilize the shared parking, well, that, that is going to limit development.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with you, Robert. I think, you know, we've heard from Andrew that, that he doesn't think that shared parking is a good idea for residential.
Well, I didn't say that, I'm just saying, I, I'm trying to understand the flow of shared parking for residential, which we never had in Freeport.
Right.
Compared to the flow of the use of shared parking for commercial. And I think it's a different usage flow as far as what's the turnover? You know, how many times that lot gets turned over a day? How's it going to flow? How's it going to serve other people in the shared parking concept? You know, is it going to, is it going to, it's going to be called shared parking, but it's only going to serve the residents. It's not going to really flow to the, the commercial.
Don't we need the permission of the, of the property owners who have, own a parking lot, participate in shared parking on the assumption that it's commercial?
We will definitely heal, hear from them when we go to public hearing on this, if they have significant concerns with that, about that. But I think they are bought into the shared parking pool, the guidelines for which are developed by the town.
So, yeah, a lot of people want to participate in shared parking because.
You don't have to provide so much.
But they don't know that, that it's going to be used by residents.
Well, no, we have to know, we will have to notify the entire district, every property owner. You know, the other thing is we have people that have excess parking and they choose not to put it in shared parking. They don't want to put it in to be able to lease it out. So you could get to a point that no one wants to lease extra parking or there's no extra parking.
And then you've told somebody they can build a building, they can count shared parking and they can't buy the shared parking.
That's up for them to work out with the market.
I really think we're going to spin our wheels here indefinitely if we don't move this forward and get public, and get comment from the public. So I would really like to just move this forward as written for, for, and set a public hearing and, and try to get this. I, I like it, I think it, I think it is a step in the right direction.
You're staying with 1.25 per unit or one?
1.2, I think that's fine where it is, 1.25 and one for, for shared, just as written, rather than not, rather than lowering it further. And if it becomes an issue, then we address it. I don't think, you know, short of like hiring parking studies and hearing from experts about how this has worked in other towns, it's just going to take forever. I mean, I think we just got to, we do something to achieve some of the stated goals that we're after.
Get public comment.
And I think we, and I think we go for it, so. I think that's it on this item for the night.
So are you taking public comment or not tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, you mean, you just put it as.
Unless there's somebody here, here who's specifically here for that item. You are, okay.
Do we have to open it up to public hearing?
No, this is not a public hearing.
Taking comment, not a formal public hearing.
Hey, everybody, Brett Richardson, Freeport Economic Development Corporation. We spent some time talking about this at our board level. Our board includes residents, property owners, developers and folks who are very involved in the downtown vision in that process. And so I think, you know, again, thank you for taking this up. If we've heard it over and over, you guys are very busy, you have a lot to do. So the fact that you've prioritized this is great for the community. Where the FDIC board landed was at 1.75 spot or spaces for shared and one space for non-shared. So basically representing, you know, a measured approach, which you guys are doing, it's an incremental step. But the idea that to go a little bit lower than how it's currently written would, we feel, work for commercial property owners in particular because you've allowed the developer to use both shared and non-shared to meet their need. That creates some flexibility from, we heard from commercial property owners. And so that's a big, that's the first place that we looked at our analysis. And then beyond that, to your point about how shared could flow, typically, you know, folks who shop, they're here during the day and they go away. Folks who are here to live are here at night. And so you're probably right, there are going to be some instances where folks.
On the weekend when everybody's home.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be some growing pains to it, but there's.
I understand.
But there's comfort there that it's worked elsewhere, it could work here and there's a surplus of parking, we all know that. So this to us feels like a measured incremental step forward. And then beyond that, we also heard from commercial property owners that the, their, their standards are too high and that they feel that they could use some of their land and put it to better use if the commercial requirement was lowered. And so we really appreciate what you're doing now, but also would encourage you as soon as you possibly can to go through the work of looking at the commercial side too. But thanks again, like I said, we landed at 1.75 for shared and one for non-shared. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Brett. Anyone else here to comment on parking? Do we have any? How do you see the?
Yeah, there you go, the participants window.
If anyone on Zoom wants to comment, they can raise their hand. Seeing none, I think they're both here for another item.
Um, okay, so, I mean, I think we can go to public hearing with it as written and we could, at the public hearing, we could still lower it to 1.75. I don't think that's enough of a change that would warrant re-notice.
I think you could, my one question for you guys, not just for this item, but for the other one, would be, do you want to have a public hearing at your first meeting in August or would you prefer to wait till September?
I'd rather just move through it.
I'd rather go sooner.
Okay, I just, my only concern is like if a lot of people are away, but.
Can they, is there some way to comment, if somebody is having a conniption fit and they're going to be away, can't they submit comment in some way?
Yeah, they can submit comment inviting.
Well, they can zoom in now, right?
They can zoom in now, they can do the hybrid meeting.
We should move forward.
I'd rather.
There's stuff happening and this is relevant to that stuff.
Finish what we, finish what we start. All right. Item number four is continued discussion of possible amendments to section 602, site plan review of the Freeport zoning ordinance.
Okay, so we talked about this a couple of months ago. There was a request from the council before the vision came out, before the final product, to look at streamlining the review process, look at making business in Freeport easier. So as you know, the project review board, the board that reviews all development proposals does three types of reviews, design review certificates, subdivision review and site plan. So a site plan couldn't include a multifamily structure like the residential projects, but it's usually a commercial building. It's just a fraction of what they do. We have so many projects that come before the board that require multiple reviews. So again, I would say this is a small incremental change, probably less impactful in the village, more impactful down on Route 1 South, Route 1 North, areas that don't have design review. So we looked at this before, I'll walk you through the language. I brought it back to an ordinance form because I don't believe that Mitch and Andy had seen it. And this is currently in for legal review. So we did, as with every other section, we're doing like a lot of cleanup, like for example, the under applicability, the A and B didn't make sense. So since they were talking about approvals, we just moved them further down. I did show this to the project review board. They thought we should add all signs for staff approval. Right now, like for example, Doughton's.
All signs?
Doughton's Car Wash got approval, but they wanted a new ground sign, so they had to come to the board just for a ground sign. So the project review board suggestion was that you can do staff approval for ground sign if you've already been through site plan. They did look at the building thresholds, a couple of people wanted to go bigger, but then, you know, a couple of members were like, okay, you're already doubling it for staff review or staff review board. So walking through, I think the biggest change is here for meetings of project review and staff review, we clarified staff review would notify within 200 feet of the parcel, which is what we do today. Project review, which typically sees bigger projects, this is proposing to go up to notify a butters within 500 feet. You know, people say they don't know what's going on in Freeport. I would say that's probably more generous than a lot of our neighboring communities. In the village, 500 feet could be significant.
Yeah, 500 feet is not much in.
Notification, but we're proposing to increase that. Our old ordinance, I can't remember when you updated it, a handful of years ago, we used to call everything major minor site plans, but when you created the staff review board, you went to a new format. So there's three levels of review in Freeport. There's town planner review, which is for smaller projects, staff review board, which is made up of the town planner, the town engineer, the code enforcement officer, the superintendent of public works and the fire chief. We would be suggesting that we add the police chief to that board.
Don't you then need a tiebreaker?
Probably. Town clerk.
Town manager.
Town manager, and then project review. So this does add a lot. I, I think, you know, we've been pretty cautious in what we let the town planner approve. You know, people will say, oh, I trust you to make a decision, but you can't always trust that I'm going to be the person in this role to make a decision. So you really need to think neutral by giving a person or individuals these power, you know, you may like them or you may not like them. So just, you know, really think of it that way as we go through. So changes that could be under town planner review would be minimal lighting, landscaping, recalculations of parking, which we already have today, changes to signing and any new signage on a site that's been through site plan review and meets the standards of the sign ordinance. Modifications including expansion of structures and impervious surfaces up to 1,000 square feet within a five-year period if the property is not in an urban impaired watershed. We have two urban impaired watersheds and when we have development like around 1,000 square feet, we really want to make sure that the engineer gets a chance to look at that stormwater carefully. We tweaked the wording here because it used to say like building foot per increase, but I've had people come in to actually shrink the building or change the parking. It just wasn't real clear and read it how it is. So that just clarified, you know.
This means they can build a thousand square foot addition without any review by the project review board?
That's what this would mean, yep. But again, this is all for discussion and debate, so you need to look at what you guys think is right.
Well, I mean, okay.
And I meant to pull the numbers, honestly, I think it's like maybe like one or two a year. It's pretty, it's a pretty small number.
And it's not that they're not subject to, it's not like they come in and say, this is what I want to do and Caroline just sort of makes up her mind based on nothing, like there are standards.
I'm having a great day.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
I mean, this is still town planner review, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's still town planner review. The next would be a change of use for an existing building to, we have, the town planner can sign off on retail to restaurant. We just want to clarify it's restaurant or restaurant carryout because so many restaurants are going to that carryout model now due to the pandemic. And then we also, that's if it does not a but a lot in residential use. We also wanted to add change of use to retail to business and professional office. We have seen some of that, like you had on Route 1 South, you had the lawn care company go in. They were really small, they weren't changing anything on the site, but they had to go through the review process. And even if you go to staff review, we still do an agenda, you still have a submission deadline, you still have to give a bunch of copies. We still notify a butter, so there is still a process. So this would be town planner review when the square footage doesn't exceed 1,500 square feet, that they can show that they're meeting the parking and sewer and that they're not making other changes on the site. So it's really for a small business that's just changing the use, but not really making. that's just changing the use but not really making any changes. And then the seasonal accessory outdoor seating is an existing use. Does anyone have questions on any of those or the threshold presented there?
Thousand square feet, is that a thousand square feet of footprint or a thousand square feet of finished space?
Under the, sorry, we need to number these and fix the formatting when they come back.
Modifications-
Including expansions of structures.
It would be, it would be finished space, right?
Well, it could-
I mean, if it's impervious-
It's structures and impervious surfaces.
Should that be or?
I think it's gross building area. I don't think it needs to be living area, which is heated.
Yeah, you want to-
Gross building area, okay.
We have like gross floor. The only thing is like, that-
It's in foot, it is in footprint, if it's two stories.
Um, the problem with gross floor area is that it would exempt like garage space, which makes me a little bit-
Well, that's why gross building area doesn't exempt that.
Okay, let me flag that. I'll work with the code officer on a, right-
Yeah, I would wa, I would want to make sure that it's not a thou, I mean, because if you have a thousand square feet of, you know, you build a foundation that's whatever that would be, like 30 by 35 or something, foundation and then three stories, I mean, that's a thousand square feet of lot, but that's huge.
Yeah, you, there's no way I would ever want to sign off-
Right, yeah, yeah, no.
On a thousand square foot footprint.
That's why I bring it up, is I think-
But I also don't want to sign off on something that just because they have like 50 garage bays exempts all that from gross floor area definition. So let me work with the code officer, so we can find a way to truly word that, so it's a real thousand square feet and not accidentally exempting-
Thousand square feet is a, that's big.
It's relatively-
We could shrink it. It's 500.
Big, yeah. I mean, this room is probably one-
500 now?
Yeah, it's 500 now.
Well, your review and the project review board's review are basically identical, aren't they? I mean, in other words, isn't the purpose of the project review board doesn't make too many judgments, right?
They also take public comment.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's a huge thing for me. One thing I don't like about town planner approval is it doesn't, although I'm pretty cautious, again, it's not always going to be me sitting here. It doesn't have the public notification, it doesn't have the public hearing process. You know, we don't go through the same, you know, we look at it and see the standards, but we don't do like the same findings of the same 10 standards and-
You know, but at the same time, and I'm playing devil's advocate to the point that I just made, but I would love to, I, I think there is a ton of red tape, which is why we're even talking about this. And I would love to see people be able to move projects forward.
Exactly. I, I think that's well said.
You know, I, I may walk back what I, what I just said.
Again, I think this-
I think we should clarify what that means, what a thousand square feet.
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. I think it's just, you know, really a couple projects a year. One thing I like about changing these standards, if you want to go back, you're not making something not conforming. Like, some of the other standards, you know, you like, whoa, that's too high, or that she keeps making bad decisions, or he keeps making bad decisions. You can change them and no one's going to be non-conforming. But you could also go a little bit lower. I find 500 is actually pretty small to sign off. If someone wants, like, I had the RSU, they wanted to come for like a little greenhouse that was bigger than a shed. So it was just over 500, so they had to go to staff review. And honestly, the stuff that goes to staff review, other than the gravel pits, we rarely get people come to the meetings because they are smaller projects. And at any time, either staff review or the town planner can bump something up.
So you have the discretion to say, hey, this may only be 900 square feet, but I'm not comfortable with, for whatever.
Yeah, so, yeah, and here currently, a town planner applicant can request a hearing by project review. So if someone didn't agree that-
Okay, so I think, I think we're good on-
So that's a safety valve. That, that makes me feel, that's great. Then I think this is good personally.
Yeah, and I think, I think if we clarify what a thousand square feet means, then-
Okay, so staff review board, I would say most of what the staff review board sees is residential fill permits that are bringing fill into a property but aren't, don't have any other permits out. They see a couple of change of uses a year. A lot of daycares actually seem to fall under the threshold where they can go to staff review over the years. So this proposal is that they could do renewals if somebody comes in before their approval expires and nothing's changed. They could come for a site plan renewal. The advantage to staff review is we still notify abutters and there's a public process, but they don't have to wait the 21 days to submit in advance of the meeting. We can kind of schedule as needed around the applicant. Change of use from one use to another, provided, again, we're going to want to look at the square footage, that they don't go over 1,000, the provision for buildings in urban impaired watershed. This would allow parking modifications up to between 1,000 and 2,000 square feet within a five-year period. I don't love the addition of the, within a five-year period because it, just tracking wise, but we want to make sure people aren't taking advantage of incremental site plan modifications. Filling of land, creation of ponds between 200 and 600, gravel pit renewals are there. The telecommunication facility, we're getting a review by the town attorney on that. And then the solar energy stays the same. And again, there's that same provision that staff review can bump into project review. We have done that once or twice. We don't send municipal projects to staff review or town planner review, even if they're small enough. It seems like that should have to go through a public process. And once or twice, we've had projects that we've known have been debatable or controversial in neighborhoods, and we've also sent that, bumped those up to project review. And then anything bigger would go to project review. There's been a little bit clarifying and wordsmithing, I would say, on the process, cleaning up the sidewalk. We have got in public feedback over time review by an expert, that language was there, really, since before we had the town engineer. This just clarifies that the town engineer can be the expert, but it's also, just like if we bring an outside consultant, we offset the cost of having an in-house town engineer, because we bill that time to the applicant, because it's time that he's putting into those projects. That's already current practice. Again, we want to clarify that. Clean up on the public hearing. And then we just really did some cleanup on performance guarantee, pre-con meeting, as-built, really more of the stuff we do behind the scenes. Approval duration, we were advised by the town attorney that we should add some language in there. We have a couple of projects that we just keep approving. They've modified them slightly when standards have changed, but they just keep coming back. And she said, you really want to have a provision in there. You know, they can come in so many times and then it would have to be a new application. So we allow for an extension, but only for one, two-year extension. That's new language. And then happy to go through anything else. Most of the additional, I think there's a couple, few wordsmithing. There is some new updated language under the standards for approving, just a little text cleanup. And then we did add some language regarding appeals. I do think that will get expanded a little bit by the town attorney. Happy to answer questions and go through it in more detail if you have questions or give you any other information that you need. That being said, I just want to disclose, this is step one to cleaning it up. I think you'll probably see this section back within another few months. We're looking at possibly putting some standards in here for multifamily, so they can just go through site plan, not site plan and subdivision. So you'll probably see this section again, but this is a first step.
I am, just to put my cards on the table, I am a-okay with all of this, with the attention that we've already talked about with the thousand square feet.
Me too. I think it just streamlines the process. And then if, if you or the applicant decides that they prefer project review board, you have that opportunity. So I think this makes a lot of sense and it's good.
So this, it does need a little more cleanup. I want to do a little more internal circulation. We need to fix like the formatting, so it's numbers and letters and not bullets. I didn't want to-
That was my next question is, can we look into a thousand square feet and set a public hearing for next month? Or is that too much?
Um, no. So the only other thing I was going to say, we need a little more cleanup on the formatting and that stuff. I do want to have, I don't know the last time we had the town attorney look at this section, so I asked her to do a high-level review. I'm expecting comments next week. So if she had any changes, I would, if they're not substantial, I could incorporate them unless you want to see the cleaned-up version back before you go to public hearing.
I don't think our input on the cleaned-up version is going to subtan, change the substance of it such that we would not be able to take it to public hearing.
If I don't hear back from her next week, it might be too rushed to put it to public hearing.
Yeah, I think that's fine. But I think if there's a way to move, to just keep it rolling, that'd be great.
Okay. So as soon as we can get that back, if there's a subs, what I think substantial enough, I'll bring it back for you for one more discussion. But otherwise, we'll do this August or September.
Yep. So we could potentially have two public hearings next month.
I do, I like the idea of getting them on one agenda because I think they have some overlapping interest.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
So you could get some comments on both, and it would be efficient for people's time. The parking, because we're specifically talking about VC1, I'm going to notify, site plan would just be agenda, typical circulation, legal ad in the paper. So it'll be good to get more public there.
Next is item, any final comments? I think we're good to move on, right? Great. Item five, discussion of a possible amendment to Section 104, definitions of the Freeport zoning ordinance to include a definition for, quote, "increase in nonconformity of a structure," end quote. This is something we talked about last month. It came out of the, the recommendation that we made to the town council to add the possibility of alterations to non, existing nonconform, legally nonconforming structures outside of the shoreline zone as, just sort of to bring that, that standard.
So I did not forward your recommendation regarding nonconforming structure expansion to the council yet, because as you guys discussed, the question of the definition came up. We talked about it internally, the code officer had also flagged it. So what we did is, we had a definition under shoreline zoning for increase in nonconformity of a structure. So we took that definition out of the shoreline zoning ordinance that you guys just approved and just struck out any references to like wetland, water body, any of the protected resources and carried the same language through. I just wanted to show it to you before we went to public hearing, but it's essentially the same thing in trying to clarify what the noncon, or what a, what a increase in nonconformity means. Again, we're just trying to provide some consistency between the two documents.
And this change would be subject to a public hearing?
Yep. Any change to the zoning ordinance?
Good.
So-
I-
This, and, sorry, this isn't in the best amendment format, because it's just for discussion, but it would just be adding a new definition to Section 104.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it, it all comes down to the sentence, "Hence, a structure may be expanded laterally, provided that the expansion extends no closer to the space standards of the zoning district." Like, that's what everybody wants to know.
Yeah.
So it's, it, in thinking this through, and actually, it, there's something else to flag, and I don't want to get off topic, but there is something to flag in the setbacks, the way the setbacks are written, too, where you can imagine a situation, everybody loves it when I draw on my paper, so I'm going to do that. There, if you do like a lot line and you have an existing nonconforming building, the extent of which is not parallel to the lot line, the setback, there's a language in the setbacks and how the setback is calculated that says, basically, you extend the building and then the setback is calculated. And it's pretty unclear to me how, like, how you're meant to calculate the setback, because, you know, the setback might be 10 feet on one side and two feet on the other side if it's legally nonconforming. So then at that point, say you add to, to the-
You're going to make it two feet the whole way.
Well, which, that's allowed here, but what if you don't? What if you go, what if your bump out goes back to the two feet, you know? And then, so like, the, the two feet is 50 feet that way.
Right.
And so now you're not, it just, it, it's all funky.
So you're saying you can increase the nonconformity to the minute, to the two foot, basically? If, if one corner was two foot, you could make the whole thing parallel to the lot line and bump-
At two feet. That's the way it's written.
So if your house or your property line aren't straight.
Right, really.
Or they're not parallel, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Which a lot of them aren't.
A lot of them aren't. So I think, I mean, the way it's written right now, I think that's fine. Personally, I think it's probably fine, but I don't, it's just still not clear. And I wonder how we can clarify it.
And again, we don't have to go with this. It was a starting point to be consistent between the definition we already have from the state. We could do a graphic. The only thing we have a graphic for now, I think, is like the definition of, like, in the setback. Oh, no, we do it for building height. We could look at a-
There's a setback graphic, but it's not helpful.
I can't think of-
So we discussed this last month, and I think the, the sense of the room was that we should permit this and see if anything bad happens over the course of a year or two and then reconsider it. But it, I mean, I still feel uncomfortable about it. And I, I think the problem is that the way it's written now, you have to have a hardship to have any kind of-
The variance language.
And on shoreline, right?
Right.
Not on shoreline somehow, right. And that is relevant, that shoreline somehow it's permitted. But the part that makes me feel uncomfortable is, like, I don't mind any of this if the abutters agree. But if the abutters don't agree, to make it that you can, if you're two feet from a neighbor and you shouldn't be, and then you make it a two-story, like, I'm less concerned if you make the two feet go longer. Like, you're already two feet away and now it's going to be two feet, but it's going to be longer. That doesn't seem like it's going to hurt the next-door neighbor, but putting a second floor on shore would, and, and I don't know. I just thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
I'm uncomfortable all month about it.
I think there is a, I mean, you know, that standard has been around in the shoreline district for a long time, and I think there's just kind of an understanding, right? Like, that this could happen and something you have to take into account when you purchase a property where this standard is in effect. And so, I mean, yeah, there's always going to be sort of a transition point where something new takes, takes effect and people have to get used to the fact that now things can be done a little bit differently. But I, yeah, I guess I'm still sort of generally in favor of it. I did, of course, I should say, I recused myself from that, from that. As I do live in a house that is legally nonconforming.
And I remember the four inches, which seemed completely ridiculous.
This was really just brought to you based upon your feedback. Like, we, it would be helpful to have a definition.
No, I think it's a great starting point. I think it's a great starting point. And I think the other thing that I would say in, in response to Mitch's point, which I think is totally good, valid, valid point, I think the, the ideal would be to create a standard that protects abutters without being beholden to a particular abutter. Because you could imagine a neighbor saying, oh, yeah, sure, great. And then, you know, there's somebody who moves in later who, you know, maybe would have, would have chosen differently. And of course, it's hard to then sort of, like, Monday morning quarterback.
Well, if they move in later, it's not really the problem, because then they saw the existing condition.
Still, you don't want to be held up by your neighbor.
No, that, right.
Yeah, I think that's-
So there's a balancing act there somewhere.
Yeah.
I think you need to be able to service your building from your own property, so you can't make these little, you know, you're right in the downtown somewhere where everybody's cheek to jowl, but I mean, you need to be able to put a ladder up on your own property. I mean, you can't make it down to a foot and say, oh, my skinniest point was a foot, I'm going to bust my whole wall down the line, you know? And, but I think-
I think in practice, it's pretty, I mean, the cost of, of taking a, an unparalleled building and making it parallel would, I mean, I don't know why anybody would ever do that. You'd have to like tear the whole thing down and then your roof line would be weird and it would be crazy.
At a triangle.
I think your situation is the norm.
Yeah.
Where you want to just put a, finish out, you know, make the side of the building parallel with the rest of the building and fill in a jog or something. And that's, or, you know, put a dormer up there or do something.
Yeah.
Those are most of the requests. People usually want to square it off. I mean, we do have that lady that spoke last month, she does want to add a second story. She's a very modest, single-story. But dormers has been another big request over the years. And then, you know, a lot of times in, back in the day, you know, Board of Appeals was granting these things under different standards.
Yeah. I, you know, I, I think that, I, I think this definition is a-
I think we should go with it.
Yeah. Thank you. Yep, that's what I was trying to say.
[laughing]
As easy as it was, good enough, let's, yeah. Because I, and I think it comes down to that sentence that, that kind of encapsulates.
Do you want to see if Robert has any comments?
Sure. Robert?
Uh, no comments. I agree. I, I, you know, I wasn't privy to the, I didn't, you know, watch the recording. I, you know, I wasn't privy to the, I didn't, you know, watch the recording last month, but this, it's, I think it's pretty clear to me, the intent of it, the intent of it, so, yeah, it looks good.
And at its core, it's just bringing the rest of the town into...
So I held that last recommendation until you could decide what to do with this, and then if you have a hearing and make a recommendation, I will send this definition and the recommended language together to the council so they have the full package.
Okay.
Next month.
Hopefully, we're not holding up, I don't remember her name, but...
Um, yes, I did have Bonnie reach out to her, she does know that, it's a little bit of a delay.
Okay.
I didn't want to go through the whole process and then have it get kicked back for the same question.
Yep, fair enough.
And, then, so next, you have cannabis, which is, Cecilia is the office expert on cannabis, so she's going to walk you through the materials. I think we're hoping tonight that we can get, we talked about buffers last time, so she zoomed in on the map just to clarify. You had asked for some comparisons of uses, you wanted to see what they were, so there's definitions of the existing uses in a table, just keep in mind, in certain zones, there's different restrictions, like square footage or setbacks or buffering that go along...
Oh, it's not quite so simple as yes or no.
The uses, yeah, zoning's never that easy.
Right.
Come on, why would it be a fine word? So, yes, this is just to kind of show you where those uses that you guys wanted to see are even permitted. The one thing I will say is that we did talk to the town attorney, when we talked about buffers last time, we talked about certain daycares and schools, you guys had brought up the issue of camps. If we want to regulate camps, we can't regulate them, it could be irrelevant, depending what zones you guys decide you feel like this might be appropriate, but we can't just say, "We're not going to allow them near Mitch's camp." Like, we need a category that camps would fit into. From a staff perspective, there's daycares and schools, we can go online, we can verify information, camps, not so much, so if you guys are adamant, depending where you decide you want to allow these, that you want to buffer around camps, we need to find a category. There's a lot of school-aged camps tucked into different places, so I just want to get you up to speed on that, but I'll let Cecilia walk you through the information you have here to see what decisions you want to make tonight on any of this.
Sure. Do we need to do a background for the people who are...
Sam?
I think we should dive in.
Okay. So, tonight, hopefully, we're looking for direction on appropriate zones. We discussed at the last meeting how we would compare existing uses to cannabis cultivation or processing, and in that meeting, we decided that. So that's why I created this table here with the items that you identified that we could consider being comparable. So that's artesian food and beverages, manufacturing and processing, and warehouse and storage were the ones we discussed. There was a, we briefly touched upon the...
Can I ask a remedial question just right there? Why is warehouse, is there something I'm not understanding about why warehouse would be more, some zones would allow manufacturing but not allow warehouse? What's the reason for that?
I don't know what the history of that is.
Okay, so just the way it is, it's historical, but...
Yeah, that's our current.
I'm trying to figure out why you would allow manufacturing and not allow warehousing.
I do not know.
They wouldn't be identical, or...
Right.
Okay.
A lot of these standards we have, like, since the 80s.
Okay.
So...
This is, well, okay.
You know, there was a question of whether cultivation facilities should be treated as greenhouses, but to, maybe Caroline can expand on this, but we, we don't have a definition of greenhouse in our land use ordinance, and greenhouses are sort of like the agricultural use, so it could be done throughout town, anywhere, so I didn't include that there because it's not something we, that's specific to any zone. So, greenhouses also don't have limitation on sizes and space standards, so I don't know if that, if you want to keep going down that route. So the table shows, you know, the different zoning districts and what is allowed of these three uses on each. And then on the next page, and I'm sorry that I didn't put this in ordinance format, Mitch, and I'm looking for feedback, how you prefer it, for me, I have to, I like tables and see things side to side, but I know that some other people like to just see the whole ordinance, but then I would have had to, like, bring you the whole zoning ordinance book because things are between the different zones and there's a lot of them. So, I broke it down to have the definition of each of these comparable uses, to kind of give you an idea of what we consider these uses that you think might be comparable. So we have artesian food and beverage, manufacturing and processing, and there's no additional standards on any of the zones for artesian food and beverages, however, we do certain, there's additional, even on the zones that allow manufacturing and processing and warehouse and storage, there's still some limitations, including size limitations on the MDA and MDB districts that I stated them there from the zoning ordinance. There's also specific restriction on some other zoning districts, like the VC3 industrial and industrial 2, and I don't know why they were there, they've been there since the 80s, which said manufacturing and processing, which does not involve the refinement of bulk raw material, so, I don't know.
Could you explain that one more, could that maybe relevant to this?
I thought it would be interesting to get some feedback from the code enforcer or the town attorney to see if this would, if this limitation on the VC3 industrial 1 and industrial 2 district would limit certain types of cannabis manufacturing and processing if it involves the refinement of bulk, bulk raw material, or if we could, because cannabis is its own use, that could not be considered refining bulk raw material.
So, but, back up one second, that issue of refining bulk raw material, that's a specific exclusion in a specific zone?
Yes, so VC3, industrial 1 and industrial 2 districts, it allows manufacturing and processing, however, there is this restriction that it says it can't involve the refinement of bulk raw material.
I think it would be clearer if that were a capital P, right? Because it is very specific to that, that official use.
It's that use.
It is manufacturing and processing, like, that use, so I, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I would think that this...
You wouldn't?
No, not if you don't draft it that way, because cannabis, I'm just shortening it, whatever you call that officially, is not going to be the same as the manufacturing and processing.
Right, so if we, if we said, "Oh yeah, that's a good idea, we would like to, we would, we would like that sort of restriction," just purely hypothetical, then we would need to put a similar restriction, maybe identical, but it would then say, you know, whatever our cannabis cultivation and whatever is, cannot involve the refinement of whatever, you know.
But why is that even there? Is it because of smell?
I think, my feeling is that it's there, and from the early 80s, when there was a lot of awakening in terms of, like, pollution from factories, so that's been carried over for a long time, and probably because we didn't have a factory that wanted to process things that was more pollutant, you know, that's...
Wouldn't the way to handle that be pollution standards, not...
We can, I don't know that, we have folders on, like, old zoning amendments, I don't know that I've ever seen anything on that, but we can poke around and see if we have anything on it. Smell was what came to my mind.
The shoe industry, I mean, that's the only thing I can think of.
Like tanning.
Tanning.
They never tanned in Freeport.
They didn't tan?
No.
Oh, okay, so it was just...
Just, I don't know, but...
Well, but maybe they didn't tan because it wasn't allowed.
Well, they just didn't tan.
Oh, they just didn't do it.
They didn't tan.
No, it was just manufacturing.
You were going to tan, you would have done it before zoning, I think, so...
Andy, do you, I'm going to put you on the spot because I know you're like a historical genius, do you have any idea why Freeport has that restriction? Anything jump out at you?
So let's go through the restriction, exact language of the restriction again?
Manufacturing and processing, which does not involve the refinement of bulk raw material, so you couldn't manufacture and process that, and the VC3 would be just outside of lower, or, you know, Lower Main Street, right after the railroad bridge.
Yeah.
I-1 would be the Beans corporate campus, and I-2 would be the order fulfillment area out on Desert Road.
Just to lock those in for something different, so, you know, I mean, I remember I was on the council years ago, in the 90s, and they built the, you know, when they first started the thing on the Desert Road, the fulfillment center, and that was supposed to be a business park, you know, to bring in small business, and, but, it was probably the limitations were put on then to attract a certain type of business, you know.
Might be a relic from the past, and it might be irrelevant for this discussion.
I think it's, it's useful as, as an example of the sorts of restrictions that would be available to us.
Yeah, but there was a lot of gentrification going on, we don't want this, we don't want that in the zoning, you know, Freeport was changing.
Yeah, but I don't think, I mean, we're not talking about manufacturing and processing use, I think if we wanted to change this, to remove that restriction, that would be an entirely separate discussion.
Yes.
No, but the reason I'm asking is because it seems to me this is identical to manufacturing and processing, and therefore, wherever manufacturing and processing is allowed, with the exception of the exclusion zone, buffer zones, it should be allowed, that would be my opening until somebody says some other point of view, but, but now the question is, it sort of is, bulk, what's the words?
Refinement of bulk material.
Refinement of bulk material, so...
That's how I would interpret it, but maybe if we have, we can exclude that.
It's right in here, isn't it?
Yeah, so your point is, if you don't allow it for other materials, do you want to allow it for cannabis?
Right, why would you allow it?
Why would you allow it for, yeah, so maybe you have to follow that through, except we don't even know why it's there.
Right. No, I think it's a great, I think it's a good, I think it's a good...
Andy's information was helpful because I'm pretty sure we do have some folders of historical information on the industrial, so let me look in there.
That'd be in the 90s.
Yeah, and see if there was discussion.
Because I remember voting on to plow the road down there, nobody was there. They wanted to plow the road going into the industrial park where Beans is because they wanted the town to pay to plow the road so they could show it. FEDC had promoted it, and Ed Barney was on the board then, he wanted to, you know, they wanted to be able to show it, take an applicant in there to see if there was, you know, in the middle of winter, because they'd finished it, then of course, Beans just said, "We'll take it all," which I think was probably the plan to begin with, but whatever.
Well, I mean, it's not like, in their new office building down there, it's not like they're going to be refining bulk raw material in the I-1 district, right?
Yeah, I don't think, well, no, because I don't think they manufacture it all in Freeport anymore.
Right.
I mean, that thing next to railroad tracks was their first manufact, well, of course, Casco Street had a lace factory, there was a factory there originally, in the 60s, there was a factory there. We used to run a go-kart there on Sundays, it was great.
Yeah, probably still would be.
But it was what they called the lace factory, and I can't remember who owned it, but we called it the lace factory, there was always a shoe shop there.
But this only applies to I-1, I-2, and VC3, right?
Yeah.
And I-1 and I-2 are both Bean properties, basically, right?
Well, they're supposedly industrial zones by definition, but they are pretty much, a lot of it is the Bean property, so...
Some of it's Eastland, Eastland still owns the property.
Yes, yes, that's right, up on the Upper Hunter Road or whatever they call it.
And VC3 is like where Sam's is? Oh no, the other side?
The other side of the railroad tracks.
The other side of the railroad tracks.
Like, Independence Drive, you know, it curves over, like, where Wilbur's used to be.
Yeah.
There is some vacant land.
Because Dingley was down there before Eastland, and they were, you know, printing, basically, I don't...
Then moving on from the manufacturing and processing, another restriction that we have that is, they're not use-specific, but on the C-1 and C-4 districts, you know, they will still be subject to that 527 section, the performance standards for commercial districts, you know, there's a couple of other standards with buffering and distance from residential uses that would apply to actually anything subject to site plan in the C-1 and C-4 districts.
And C-3, any of the commercials.
Well, wait, and, yes, and all of that is allowed in C-1 and C-4, yep?
So I just put that there to show that you can allow a use and have additional performance standards for it, or that in these areas that allow these uses, they still have some restrictions, as an example, since we're comparing uses.
Right.
The next one is the warehouse and storage facility, and maybe by mistake, we have two different definitions for it on the section 104 definitions. And then, the MDA and MDB district actually have, like, size restrictions on those facilities. So if you're on a lot less than 3 acres, it says that it's, it would be limited to 2,500 square feet of gross floor area, and then, it looks like they add it on as, if you have more acres, then you can add more floor area to that, up to 10,000 square feet. And then there's also another section in the MDA and MDB districts that would include those that have that, you know, additional distance, 100 feet from the closest point of a residential building. So there's a couple of other restrictions on these uses.
And again, we had this issue about where it's warehouses allowed and...
Right, so do we...
I'm trying to figure out...
Sort of cherry pick some from warehouse and some from manufacturing?
I sort of feel like if you go into the most restrictive of both of these, and then you'd be kind of safe, and you'd create lots of opportunity for these businesses to exist, then you wouldn't mess anything up.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm sort of generally on board with that.
Yeah, so tonight, we're looking for directions so that we move this project forward in terms of which zoning districts you think, the cannabis cultivation and...
So, so I think, if we took, if we took, I mean, artisan food and beverage, I think is related but often looks differently, different on...
You would allow that in places you wouldn't allow a warehouse.
Yeah, definitely, right, right. So I think if you look at, you know, the districts where both manufacturing and processing and warehouse and storage are allowed, that would eliminate VC1, which I think is basically eliminated anyway, right, with buffer zones.
Actually included another, that buffer map, I know when I first initially showed it to you, like, you couldn't really see until you zoomed in, and there's very few districts that would be completely limited. The local business one would be kind of completely encompassed by the school buffer.
Right.
The village mixed-use one, and VC2, but there's still room on some of the other districts.
But VC2 wouldn't be, if you just go through this chart, you, you wouldn't allow it in, in C-3, you wouldn't allow it in VC1, you wouldn't allow it in any of, you'd only allow it where both are allowed.
Which is kind of convenient because I think everybody would agree that we probably don't want it in the VC1.
Right.
It's almost gone from VC3 by buffering, it's totally gone from local business district by buffering anyway, and...
And so now you're left with the most obvious places, which is the MDA, MDB, C-1, C-4, and the two industrial districts.
Cecilia, can I just ask you a quick question? So you're calling for warehouse and storage, that included warehouse and storage and warehouse facility?
Yeah.
Okay.
They weren't usually, like, in the, while in the definition, it was separate, like, on the site plan it wasn't.
Yeah, because one includes outdoor areas and one doesn't.
Right.
I, okay, so the board is saying they want us to look at adding whatever cannabis uses we define, or the board defines, and the districts where manufacturing and processing and warehouse are both currently permitted uses, correct?
Under the restrictions of both of, the more restrictive of the both of those. So if the warehouse has a restriction of a buffer, that would apply here.
And also the outdoor storage?
Is the board in a...
Well, that's...
I'm going to pause you on that one for a second, is the board all in agreement with Mitch that whatever of those two have the most strict standards, or no?
I just think it should be, we should start out by putting it where it is right now, which is up in the MDA and MDB.
And leave it there.
You would go further, as in more restrictive than...
No, I'd just say, why run it up, why with these other areas? You know, I live down C-1, that's not the issue, but I, I know the lots down there.
Yeah.
And it's probably not going to happen down there, because if they're going to operate in a warehouse space, we got... And it's probably not going to happen down there because if they're going to operate in a warehouse space, we got two in town now. They're up in M D one and M D A and M D B. Let's just make it legal up there in those two zones. You know, those are big lots and just try that.
I will add that often when you look at.
And see how many.
Scale and in other places, a lot of cities, towns, and places, you know, don't allow these uses on areas that are also residential. So that's, you know, the negative point for for those two zones because M D A and M D B, you know, is also a residential use, whereas the other ones.
That's where they are right now, though.
But that's, am I correct?
Yeah, I will say M D A, M D B has built out as residential, but from a land use perspective, they're not really a residential zone. They have more permitted uses.
Yeah, and that's what it was supposed to be for.
But we did hear that with the solar, you know, when we sent out notices, people came in and said, oh, I live in a residential area. So that's definitely the feel, the feeling up there, just because it hasn't built out as expected. One limiting factor you have up there is public, you don't have public utilities very far up Route one, whereas some of the other commercial districts you do. I mean, clearly we have two businesses up there that seem to function fine on private utilities. You do have a couple of people on the call and Hillary's here. They're all experts in the industry, so can shed some light on that. But that is one difference to keep in mind, utilities.
There's a couple of districts that allow all three uses, artisan food and beverage, manufacturing, processing, and warehouse and storage.
The two industrial districts, I don't understand why they would.
I think.
But you could still have cultivation on it even if there was that issue with that raw bulk material extraction.
Industrial districts, I mean, even if we technically allow them in the industrial districts realistically.
It's not, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, it's bean land.
Yeah, it's not going to happen. So, you know, why write it in if it's not going to happen?
Yeah, well, I think for a future.
Well, because they're industrial districts, that's why.
Yeah.
And it's for a future use in which bean divests.
Divests and sells it and that's an industrial zone and.
After they just dump how many millions of dollars into it?
Fair point, fair point, yeah.
I mean, not kidding ourselves, you know?
Well, C one and C four, C four is just like.
Four is pretty limited too because you have the hundred and forty-four apartments. You have that, you do have the M D O T testing facility out there, but you do have three vacant pieces of land. Out there. I mean, they're all abiding the apartments.
How many units is it?
Hundred and forty-four.
How many seats are in this room for the public hearing?
Haven't counted.
So, yeah, but they're not occupied yet, are they?
Um, there are people moving in.
And they're moving, yeah. So there's, how many parcels out there on that side of the street?
C four is one, two, C four is five. There.
How many does Bean own?
I don't know that they own any in C four.
Sold that one to, they sold that one to the.
Yeah, they sold that one and they got merged. There's the D O T one.
Which they don't want to sell.
I don't know who owns.
And the other one's the town, isn't it? Isn't the town?
I don't know. Somebody owns the corner.
Uh, Peter Taggart used to own the corner. I don't know if he still does or not. I don't know who owns the other two. I will say.
I don't know if there's even two left, is there?
Right across, the zoning map shows three. Right across the street and industrial two, it is owned primarily by one landowner, but there is a lot of vacant land out there. I mean, it hasn't built out industrial, but you.
But that's where we said industrial would go.
I mean, one way of looking at it is just taking like maybe a more like rational approach and just making a policy, which is we're comparing it to these uses. If we allowed all these uses in these zones, then we'll open those up. So that, so that it's more equitable and people in different zones won't feel, of course, we will have a bigger notification process.
I mean, there'll be many different opinions. There are different opinions here. I just.
And we could also look into like the zone's purpose and, you know, for each of those.
This is why I don't know how you could not allow it in an industrial zone.
Yeah, to me, it's not a, you know.
And C four is, I mean, C one is the other issue.
Yeah, I I like the idea of allowing it in areas where there are public utilities and sort of a few bigger lots. And I also think that in, I mean, allowing it as an added use in a district is twenty-five characters on a, you know, zoning ordinance, right? And some notifications. But once we get through that, it's really not, you know, it's not a huge, a huge lift, so.
We're now seeking volunteers for.
Yeah.
Stuffing in below.
Sorry. Understood.
So, no, really, some of these zones, because there's people or companies that own multiple parcels, like the industrial's not going to be a lot of notification.
Right.
Well, except we do have to go to direct departments.
I don't, I don't think anyone here is suggesting that we let the notification process stand in the way of what we deem to be the correct districts to put this in, so.
I'm, we haven't heard from Robert, but I'm not really hearing a final consensus as.
I'll give my two cents real quick. First, this document that Cecilia put together is fantastic. It really, really helped.
Oh, he likes cables too.
And no matter who the ownership is, I I think that we have to just kind of think about it's, I think what Mitch said is correct, that you have, if it's approved for manufacturing, processing, or warehouse and storage, both of those, I think at the very least, those are, that's what we should consider. So that would be M D A, M D B, C one, C four, I one, and I two.
Right.
I like that approach.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I like that approach. I think it is important to clarify that we have two definitions here for consideration, cannabation, cannabis cultivation facility and also cannabis manufacturing and processing facility. So I think the one that we've probably had in mind, or at least I, speaking for myself, the one that I've had in mind is the manufacturing and processing facility as being most analogous to the manufacturing and processing, obviously, and also warehouse and storage, but I think the cultivation facility. Yeah, nevermind, it's probably the same.
I think it's pretty much the same.
At least from the, from the exterior and in terms of the impact on the neighborhood and the traffic.
Yeah, it's an indoor, it's an indoor facility. The only issue is smell.
I'm gonna pause you right there because you just said it's an indoor facility. You guys haven't talked about that.
Right.
If you want it to be indoor or outdoor, my understanding, and I'll look at Hillary in case she wants to shed light, but is that there is not a lot of outdoor growing in Maine, is my understanding?
I can't imagine.
But if you don't want outdoor growing, you want to.
No, that's a great, I was.
I think we don't want outdoor growing. The, the, the community will be upset with that. I mean, I don't, I don't see how they could grow. It's a high value crop. You can't grow it outdoors in the middle of Freeport.
Well, if you feel that way, you want to write it into your standard.
Might as well, but I, I think it won't.
I, I would, I, speaking for myself, I would share that view, that I think it, I think that in this town and at this time, it makes sense to limit it to indoor only. And I think that that puts the two uses, I, I think it's a great starting point, basically is what I'm trying to say. I think it's a great.
I agree with that.
Those two, you know, put both uses in the same zones and, and the zones that Robert just listed where both of the, yeah, said it before.
Um, Rosemary and Andy, do you guys have thoughts on indoor, outdoor?
Indoor.
Indoor? Okay, so, other than Andy, for now, everybody is, the starting point for the discussion to invite the public in.
Yeah, exactly. And I think Andy's point is a great.
Five zones.
Point that it seems to be working pretty well in, in the zones where it is. And I think we see what the public has to say about the rest of them.
But you want to keep the other, you want to keep the other zones. I think the other thing, if you get feedback, if you permit him on his own, you could have him on every single parcel. So depending what your feedback is, you could look at doing land use restrictions like you did for solar, but.
You mean only so many?
Um, so we're not going to regulate the licensing. It's up for the council to decide if they want to limit licensing. But from a land use perspective for solar, for example, you didn't want to see solar all up and down Route one. So you said it can only be no closer than a mile to another large facility. But again, I think you could hear.
That's an interesting.
Yeah.
Or you could be fine and have them everywhere, but.
That's the idea. There's so many ways to, to restrict it if needed. That's why you kind of start a little bit larger and then just hear from the public.
Could I ask one other question? Do we know much about what other towns are doing? And my reason is because if all the other towns are saying no and we're saying yes, then you really could have all of Route one be, I mean, it could happen and that's not what anybody wants.
Cecilia had a pretty exhaustive review of.
A lot of towns are allowing it, you know, um, so, like, there's not many towns that are doing what we're doing, which is allowing only manufacturing and processing. A lot of towns allow, that don't want retail will allow manufacturing, processing, and research. But we're, we're going to be a little odd that we're just going to have those two uses instead of those three uses. But some towns are still restricting retail and it, it so varies. For instance, Brunswick allow all the uses, but they restrict it to what is sort of like their industrial growth zone. So it's all kind of out there in that one area.
That's in the industrial park area.
I think that's kind of where it was, but I'm not too familiar. I don't remember off the top of my head the, the name of the districts, but I think it's like the industrial growth, which is like an industrial.
They have an industrial park where.
Yeah, a lot of times it sounds like they go into the industrial.
Off Greenwood Road where Beans is in there. There's a propane place in there. That's an industrial park. I don't know if there and there or not.
Where?
Right off Greenwood Road in behind.
Like by Hancock Lumber.
Oh, yeah.
That's, comes out on Church Street, goes in off Greenwood Street.
I would say the two we have, one in under other manufacturing and processing uses or one got a change of use. One of them is a metal building that was formerly used to make sails. It's a very, I think visually attractive building because of the standards we have in place in that zone. The other one is in an old structure that looks more like a two-story house. So I'd say neither of ours fit into that typical stereotype of the industrial building with like all the hovered dead doors and the loading bay. So Cecilia, what else did you need?
Most people, most people want a warehouse space because they want a loading dock.
Which we don't have a lot of in Freeport currently.
Well, I buy some supplies in Benefit and my guy's getting booted out because the guy next to him's got a grow place and he's taken almost all, all the spaces except for one. And he's getting booted out because it's in the proper zone. It's, there's no mortgage on it, so there's no federal mortgage on, on the property, which is a requirement, I think. Well, there's a bunch of requirements and, you know, so he's getting bumped to this guy owns another warehouse space. It's in a different zone where he can't grow cannabis. But the warehouse he's in right now is, he's getting bumped because the guy can pay more and my little supplier can't.
Yeah, I think that's, that has been flagged, I think, as an issue that the board is concerned about is just keeping the price of warehouse space in town.
Well, you can't really control that once you're.
The cost of land in Freeport is pretty high.
Right.
And, and there's a lot of pressure for residential development, you know, so I, I don't see limitations in our surrounding communities as being something that will draw the industry here.
I mean, we could theoretically, we could do something like, you could say, you can't build within.
A thousand feet.
Yeah, or you could put a time restriction on it too, right? Like you could say.
I think there's a lot of ways. Once you see, I think, once you see the language in the zone and we kind of dissect what standards are already in place, like square footage limitations that we already have for manufacturing and processing that you're telling us to carry over to the new use, like there might be a lot of restrictions that are already limiting factors there.
That in itself would be limiting because even for whoever's procuring a license, remember it had to do with those different tiers and like Amy mentioned, you know, like, that's like usually maybe one-third of the size of the facility, so you need the other two-thirds. So it's going to limit a lot of the the production in terms of the cultivation facilities.
So I think to, to sort of wrap up the first part of this discussion, I, does it, it seems like generally the board feels that a good starting point would be to sort of merge the, what is it, manufacturing and processing and warehouse and storage uses? Put the indoor only restriction and then go, go through this very helpful document that Cecilia put together and take whatever the, the more restrictive, you know, options and apply it to both cannabis uses. Is that a good way of summing that up? So I think, I think that's a, hopefully a, a great starting point. And then I guess that would get us kind of to the next step to see this in ordinance language. And I would say the other thing that I think would be helpful tonight is to hear from anyone who's here to comment on this specifically. But before we do that, are there any, does anybody want to correct anything about what I just said or does that make sense? Okay, all right. So, Robert, have anything to add?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so, members of the public, I do not care which of you goes first, so.
Any of a couple of people on Zoom as well.
And we have a couple of people on Zoom too, right? But we'll start in the room. And as a reminder, please state your name and interest, I guess. Introduce yourself.
Eric Smith, I live in District Two. I probably live, I'm certain I live closer to a growth facility than anyone else in this room and probably among a half dozen people in town that live the closest to a growing facility. So I just want to respond to a couple of comments that I've heard from the board. In terms of things or keeping things in M D A or M D B, because it's working well there, I would suggest that it's working well there because there are only two places. And that that's not necessarily about where it is as much as there's only two of them. The other thing I would say is in terms of the comment that there are big lots up there, there are big lots up there and there are very small lots up there. And the lot that one of the current facilities is on is a tiny lot. It's less than an acre. So, and I don't see any reference to lot size limitations here. I see if it's more than three or if it's under three, but I don't see any minimum size. So I, I think that would be something I would suggest you take another look at because I do think it is different than artisanal food and beverage. And so I, I like what I've heard in terms of what's here. I haven't seen, I haven't been able to read all of the detail yet. But I would say that also the hundred feet limitation from residential building, I think may be too small. I, I think again, artisanal food and beverage is one thing, cannabis growth is another. So I, I would say that those are the two things that I would encourage you to take a closer look at. And.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
In your opinion, what would be a good buffer from residential?
Well, again, I, I think that could depend on what you decide is the minimum lot size. I mean, if you could do five hundred feet, that would be ideal. I don't know that that is.
I mean, a buffer could stand in place of a minimum lot size too, because if you have a certain.
That's true too.
Or a setback, maybe.
And, and a setback, the setback could be, could be part of that. One of the things that I also appreciate in here is that, you know, in terms of the food and beverages, you're talking about landscaping buffers and site plan, which is, I would say, I, I think one of the strategies for at least one of the facilities is to make it look, look as uninteresting as possible, which has meant that it is not particularly attractive. So, and that's, I understand that's being done somewhat intentionally. But I, I do, I do not think that's something that you want replicated throughout the town.
You asking another question? Is there anything noxious that you experienced being so close?
You know, noxious is a subjective term. It is noticeable.
Smell?
Yes. I can tell when the crop is ready.
Wow.
For sure.
Like, we're gonna, or at least I, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit just because I'm curious and you're standing right there. So feel free to.
Yep.
You know, but, so is it like when you go out to your car in the morning in the driveway or is it inside the house if the crop is?
Oh, no, it's outside. I, well, you know, but if it's this time of year and the windows are open.
Right.
Then it would be inside too.
Yeah, okay.
How close are you?
Probably about a hundred feet.
Close.
Hence your thoughts on the hundred-foot buffer.
Yeah. Yeah, like your point on the strategy of the buffer as opposed to lot size because you can have a fifty-acre lot and put it right in that corner where the. Setbacks.
Right, and if you don't, I mean, if you have certain setbacks from the, then functionally you can't build on a lot that's smaller than a, whatever the set, you know, setbacks start to run into each other on a really little lot, so. So if, are there other concerns other than the smell associated with the? So if, are there other concerns other than the smell associated with the?
No, I, I mean, I, I guess the, the only other thing I would say, you know, as it relates to MDA and MDB specifically, and I, I will admit that, you know, Carolyn said, um, that that's being built out as residential, but that's not necessarily the, the purpose of that. And I guess I'm not entirely sure what the purpose of MDA and MDB is because when I was at the project review board reviewing the subdivision that is going on the lot where the label MDA is on the zoning map, the discussion of the project review board was, well, this is where we want this more dense housing going. That's the purpose of this zone. And you're talking about a subdivision with how many units, Carolyn?
Eighty, so this area is a growth area, commercial and residential.
So where is that subdivision going?
Right where it says MDA.
In the smog, again.
On that, yeah, that big.
In this map, in this.
On this map, yeah.
Off the Route One side of it.
So, and in addition, and it's not just that. I mean, there are being, there are roads being cut into what have been tree growth lands.
Was that that big lot out behind the junkyard right off Route One there?
Uh, it's, it's the one next to the new conservation.
Yeah, yeah, that runs in behind the junkyard, off, off.
Yes, it does, you just, but you access it directly from Route One, yeah.
It's that woman that passed away and they cut up that lot.
So, so I would just say that that is becoming a much more dense residential area. And, and again, I, I am not here to tell you what the purpose of that, those zones should be. I guess I'm not entirely clear. I know that it's mixed use, I know that there's commercial there. But I guess to some of the comments that I've heard from you all, you have industrial zones and you have commercial zones. And so it would seem to me that this is the sort of thing that would make sense either to be on a very large lot, so large that there really isn't any contact with anybody, residential or not, or it's in a commercial or residential zone where that is what you are expected to encounter, rather than being in and among a growing residential area.
What are the commercial uses allowed in MDA and MDB?
Um, well, do you want me to read you the purpose?
Yes.
First? And we can give you the zoning sections of these next month if it would be helpful to see the purposes. It's the intent of the district to maintain the present balance between residential and limited business uses in an area which includes some moderately densely developed areas containing structures of historical significance and sections which are more rural in nature. Route One is the major roadway in this district and extends from the village to the town of Brunswick border. Provisions below are intended to allow a mix of residential and commercial uses while protecting the neighborhood and residential properties. And there are 44 different uses that are permitted there. So you can have residential uses, you can have agriculture, all the subdivisions, hotel, offices, outdoor recreation, assembly, junkyard, auto repair service, campground, construction services, restaurants limited inside, retail limited in size, warehouse, parking for open space, artisan food and beverage, boatyard, solar farms. There's a real large variety. I think, interesting, the reason I wanted to read you the purpose is that last sentence of, you know, protecting the mix or whatever the terminology I thought was a good.
Well, how do you protect the mix?
Allow, allow a mix while protecting the neighborhoods. I think, you know, kind of what was suggested to you, you could have setback or you could have bigger lot size or you could put a square footage limitation. Like one of them today that went into manufacturing and processing, they have square footage limitations up there. And a lot of our warehouse store, or a lot of our storage restrictions were to prevent self-storage facilities going and taking up huge expanses. But it could be good to review some of those purposes.
The, the only other comment that I will make, and I'm, I don't really have a strong opinion about this, but I, I understand why all of the comments have been favoring indoor versus outdoor. I would, and I, I understand all of the consideration around that. I would also ask you to consider the energy consumption required for indoor growth in these very intensive facilities. You know, there are, in the, the facility that is near me, there are, I think, about eight heat pumps for, for a size about this room. So it is, and, and that's not the lighting, that's just the heating. So, um, you know, I, I think longer term, when you're thinking about energy efficiency and the town of Freeport, and I know you're talking about being on public utilities and all of that, just in terms of what that requirement is, it's a, it's a high-intensity energy use.
I wonder why that, I mean, I wonder why that is. Like you could, you know, I worked on a house a few years ago that we heated with a dehumidifier.
No, because it has to be, because it's, it's humidity control and temperature.
But like, if, I mean, the heat pumps are not controlling humidity, they're controlling temperature and you should be able to build something that's tight enough that you don't have to, I mean, you should be able to heat it with a single heat pump. No, no problem at all.
That's the issue is.
What's the issue?
How hot you want it.
Yeah, how hot you want it.
Oh, yeah.
We do some other people on here that.
Yeah, sorry.
That might be able to shed some light.
Let's listen to some more.
Yeah, it's interesting that the, the MDA, it does seem like everything's just sort of been like funneled northward into that little corridor. Like, yeah, not a lot of, yeah, anyway, all right, next in-person commenter.
Good evening, my name's Hillary Lister and I work with the business that was just referenced here. Excuse me. I can address a few of the things. The most recent question that was brought up around heat pumps, they're actually primarily used for cooling. So that's, it's mostly a challenge of keeping the areas cool enough with the lighting. So that would be their purpose. Question earlier about how many other towns are doing this? There's currently a quick count I did of about 70 municipalities in the state that have adopted ordinance allowing some sort of adult-use cannabis businesses. Of those, about 25 restricted to no retail stores, so just cultivation, manufacturing, testing, or a combination of those. Had a couple question, or just concern, I'd heard earlier mention of a 20, I think it was a 2,500-foot limit on the, uh, square footage of the whole facility, it sounded like, for MDB. And that would, I'm not sure.
That's, that's the first jump and if you have an additional acre, you can add.
Okay, and in this case, the facility would not have an additional acre, so that might be a concern if it's a strict 2,500-square-foot limit on the total size of the facility or total floor space.
Does it do with your acreage, right?
Yes.
Well, if, if you read, it says if you have, you know, three acres or less, you know, less than three acres. So you had a half an acre.
More than, yeah.
If you have a half an acre lot or, or an acre lot, you can put 2,500 square feet of gross floor area on it. And if you have another, you know, if you add, basically, what does it say here? No more than 5,000 square feet increased by, it explains how you can jump the square footage up another 5,000.
To 5,000, really?
Yeah. No more than 5,000 square feet.
Oh, I see, in the.
Increase no more than 10,000 square feet.
Yeah, one of the facilities is capped at 10,000 as they went in under manufacturing and processing. Is the other facility already at 2,500 square feet?
I would need to check and maybe some of the people who are on Zoom might be able to answer that specifically. I do know, I think they would be interested though in having a larger, uh, square footage, especially since the tiers for cultivation, that would only allow up to tier-two cultivation, which is up to 2,000 square feet of cultivation with, that would, and be 500 feet remaining for everything that wasn't strictly flowering cultivation.
So you're saying.
So that would probably.
Aligning the.
That would make it potentially impossible to do a feasible cultivation facility under the adult-use licensing there?
On property less than three acres.
Yep. And.
Well, but that's what we, yeah.
That's what you're allowing in the.
That's what you're allowing now. I, I can't imagine why we would allow bigger buildings, I mean, back to your point, on smaller lots, yeah. It's a big industrial building, forget about the use. Would you allow it for anybody else?
Right, well, these, yeah, these are the, these are the everybody else requirements.
Right, these are the everybody else requirements. So, uh, I don't think we should be more lenient here. We just, I just don't want to be less lenient or, you know.
I would agree with that.
And I guess the one other question was, in the manufacturing definition, if it would have, maintain the restriction of no refinement of bulk raw material? And if that was the case, that would potentially restrict any processing or manufacturing that they would be doing. I'm not sure if that would apply, for example, of infusing cannabis flower into coconut oil, if that would be refining bulk raw material or doing an alcohol extraction, if that would fall under that. But it seems like those both would be restricted.
Where was that restriction?
Uh, in the industrial.
Two industrial districts.
We have that flagged to look and see.
Because we don't even know why it's there for anybody else and. I mean, I certainly understand that doesn't seem to make sense.
It's not a restriction, I don't.
It wouldn't be.
Look, if we're trying to carry the most restrictive forward, you can't necessarily carry that one forward.
But I thought you were looking at carrying forward the least restrictive standard in each of those zones.
Oh, I thought you were.
So it doesn't apply to the MDA and MDB currently, for what that's worth, I mean.
I thought we would apply the most restrictive.
Of any zone to all zones?
Yeah, but if it, but.
Whatever restrictions warehousing or if you're a warehouse and you have this restriction or if you're a, a manufacturing facility and you have that restriction, then we would have this and that restriction.
But I think the, so this is, this is a key, a key point because I, I think there's, so that's not the way I was, or that, that's one interpret, I think what you guys are getting at is one interpretation of that. What I would say is manufacturing and processing is restricted to, so there, there is a restriction that says manufacturing and processing, which cannot include the refinement of bulk raw material in the VC Three, I One and I Two districts. I would say, okay, let's take that and that restriction as a unit and apply it to cannabis. I wouldn't say let's not involve the refinement of bulk raw material anywhere. Does that make sense?
Right, so for example, I, I think everyone's interpreting it different ways, so this is really good.
I'm not sure I got it.
In M, in Route One North, if it says today, you can, I'm gonna make some stuff up just for example. Up there, you can only have 10,000 square feet. Down there, you can only have 5,000 square feet. I thought you were saying, in that zone, if you added cannabis, you'd say 10, in that zone, you'd say 5. But now I hear you saying, no, we want to look at the entire town in the most restrictive anywhere.
When I said the most restrictive, I meant the most restrictive in each area.
In each zone, okay.
Each zone.
Right, so.
That's not what you meant, though?
But he was.
I think.
No, I'm agreeing with that interpretation.
I don't know if Rosemary was thinking that though.
What I, I was hearing was that we should, um, the strictest restriction of warehouses should be put in all areas. That's what I heard.
That's quite, that's quite different.
Very different.
Yeah, that's very. Yeah.
That's how I understood it.
That's how I understood it.
All right, so Andy and Robert weigh in here.
Well, I, I, I just, obviously the warehouse, a traditional warehouse space is obviously the best space. Because that's where most of them go. Because these guys just ended up with a couple of buildings they could use. So, you know, I live down on Route One and it's not because I live there, but, you know, I've seen all the, all the restrictions and all the, uh, regulations and the concerns about you can only have one garage door facing the street and everything has to be on an angle and, you know, all these things. And, and then you're gonna say, okay, because it's cannabis, we want a warehouse down there. And so, you know, I'm looking at the zone, I'm going, okay, where are you gonna put it? You know, that it's, you can't see it because you can't have a door facing the street. I mean, when Casco Bay Ford went in down there, it was, you know, meetings and meetings and meetings. How many balloons and how tall is the building gonna be and how many garage doors and?
But you can, the standard did change, so you could.
Yeah, yeah, but.
Have them now, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to look at all, all the restrictions and all the concerns they put on, on how that zone was developed. And then we're gonna say, because, and I'm not blaming marijuana, but I'm saying because it's marijuana, oh, we want to have a warehouse so they can have marijuana. So, you know, because that's what's gonna end up being built and these guys are gonna go, and somebody, if somebody's gonna build this, first of all, they can't have a, I believe they can't have a loan.
Yeah, for the most part, no.
Yeah, yeah, you can't have a loan because you can't, you can't have an FDIC bank account for it.
Oh, sure, because it's not approved.
Because it, because it's so, yeah, that's why my buddies go, getting booted out of that warehouse, so.
The weird part, yeah.
So, and then, so that, so somebody's gotta pay cash for a warehouse. And then you gotta build a warehouse that's way back off the road somewhere that can't be seen. So I'm looking at Route One South and say, okay, there's like two lots probably left where you could build a warehouse. So, you know.
If you put like a.
That's where it would be allowed, those two lots. That's sort of what I was thinking. If you would allow a warehouse, if it's already allowed to have a warehouse under whatever restrictions that warehouse has.
And if there's gonna be a warehouse there and somebody wants to use it for the cultivation.
For this reason, it's just this reason versus that reason.
I'm just, I just, if you're gonna do it, it ought to go somewhere where it's, where it's gonna work, first of all. Instead of making it, putting it in a zone where it probably won't work.
Well, what zone would it work?
I think it's gonna depend how you do it because like if you say.
You have a big enough buffer.
Yeah, if you give a big buffer, a lot of those lots on Route One South, between Route One and 295 are so narrow that if you put in a big buffer, it's not.
They're 150 feet deep.
Feasible, although I'm looking to see.
And most of the lots is like two or three lots that face Route One on the east side. It might be big enough, but, you know, that's it.
Yeah, when you did solar, for example, you said they must be set back a minimum of 150 feet from US Route One right of way. And then you added another restriction, but I can't remember, but that itself was.
It's going up on top of the hill.
Yeah, that itself was pretty limiting. They pretty much couldn't be only a couple lots where they really wouldn't be right on Route One.
But I mean, I think the, the counter to that is to say, well, we only have two of them in town right now. And so if there's two lots where it can happen and they both get built out, we're doubling our, you know.
So the question is, do you want, you know, is it, is that what you're trying to encourage down there now is warehouse? I know it's permitted, but.
Right.
Is that what you're trying to encourage on Route One South?
I mean, it's not necessarily, I guess the other way to think of that is it's, it's not what are we trying to encourage? It's that there's already a standard that would allow a warehouse and do we want to say that you can build a warehouse, but you can't use it for marijuana?
That's the problem I have. And if you, if you think we shouldn't have more warehouses on, you know, on Route One South, I'd rather than talk about remove warehousing from that zone.
Then, then discriminate.
But if warehousing is allowed, I hate to discriminate against the use.
I think that's just a different, it's sort of, it, it, yeah, it's a different framing, you know? It's a different framing of the.
This must be a land use thing, you know?
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good point that there's not, you know, there, there aren't a lot of places where, where this, you know, would work. But I think it, that may just be, be what it is and we don't necessarily need to, you know, think through at, at a granular level which lots would be. I think we think about how, what, what sorts of restrictions we would want to place on the use to protect the butters, protect, you know, and, and sort of cultivate the, cultivate, and I didn't mean to use that word, but you know what I mean? Sort of get, get, yeah, encourage the sort of, um, the sort of look and the sort of feel that we're after, so.
So I think because there was confusion, it was really good to, to back up. We did get away from Adam's comments.
Yes.
Sorry.
Work in the meantime.
That's fine, yes, so the primary concern would just be if you do include the restriction on no refinement of bulk materials, that would effectively restrict any manufacturing facilities for adult-use marijuana. And it was my understanding that the, there was an ordinance to allow it in some locations with some restrictions, whereas that would effectively prohibit it backwards.
I really don't understand why that's in there because if it's an industrial zone, I can't remember, I can't remember why it was in there.
Yeah.
And if we flagged it.
We have that, we have that flag.
No, we're good.
The existing ones came in under the manufacturing ordinance.
But they weren't in a zone that said you can't do the.
Oh, they weren't in that zone, I see.
Do you have other?
That's not, that was not.
Let's hear from the members of the public who are online, if they wish to speak. As a reminder, the protocol is to raise your virtual hand and we will then bring you over, at which point we will be able to hear you in the room.
I don't see any hands. Oh, there we go, do you want to bring Peter over to talk?
Yes, please.
Okay, Peter, you can unmute.
Okay, thanks, thanks for, thanks for having me on tonight and thank you for this meeting, appreciate that. My name's Peter Ingram, I'm one of the cultivators, I'm in the, the, uh, the, uh, off of Route One there, not, not the Noble, Noble Street One. off of Route 1 there, not, not the Noble, Noble Street one. I'm the MDA, the MDA lot. I did want to just talk briefly about our odor control, because that was brought up earlier. We do use carbon filters, and I've never been made aware of an odor issue with any of the neighbors. So, you know, certainly important for me to have that information. We are very committed to being good neighbors and good community members, and are able and happy to quickly and efficiently respond to any complaints that might pop up like this. It's certainly within the, the scope of our control because of our, you know, building being indoor of facility. And, and the other thing I wanted to bring up as well was our, our mutual concerns for the environmental toll that the industry takes. It's one of the, it's one of the downsides of this industry. It is, it is energy-intensive. And, and so what we've done, and which I would encourage the, the planning board to, to look at, or, or the council to look at, is, is how companies are getting their energy. And so we, we've participated in a community solar farm, so that we can offset that carbon imprint, impact. And I think that's, that is a really important comment. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Peter. There is one other person on Zoom. Any other thoughts on this? I'm not sure what, I mean, is there a, there's not really a land use way to require cultivators to buy into a community solar farm, is there?
Um, not that I'm aware of, but when we go to craft language, we can look at, see if any other towns are addressing that, if there's a way we can legally address it through some other method.
My own opinion is, if you wish to address energy use, you need to make it, you know, apply to anybody else who's a big energy consumer, and I, I wouldn't want us to.
No, I think it's a fair point. It would be hard. I think it's, there's a lot of good reasons now to use renewable energy, so.
Right.
Hopefully, people make that choice on their own, especially big energy users.
So, does the board have any other questions? And then Cecilia, do you feel like you got the information you need from the board?
So to clarify, when we come back here to discuss this and send out notifications, we are going to consider allowing cultivation and manufacturing and, and processing on the zoning districts that allow warehouse and manufacturing facilities.
Both.
Both. So that would be the MDA 1, uh, A, MDA B, Commercial 1, Commercial 4, Industrial 1 and Industrial 2. And that when we start crafting the performance standards, that's the part that I'm unclear on, is whether we would be just doing the most restrictive standards for both. Are we combining them and, uh, putting them across all the different zoning districts, or just for that particular, for that particular?
You're combining the two within the district.
Within the dis, thank you, okay.
And the only issue is the one that was brought up about this raw materials, because that.
It seems to be.
That would not, I, I'd like to remove that unless somebody comes up with a reason why.
Well, I think we ought to know the history of it.
Yeah, I have that flag to look at. So the thought was that we would get through zones tonight, and then we'd kind of go away and, and work on some standards. But do you want to see the actual zoning text and the purpose of each zone and how it would fit in? Or do you feel like this presentation gave you that information?
It would hurt to see the intent of the zone.
And, and should we address the acreage?
The buffers or the acreage that we didn't resolve?
Well, I don't, I wasn't sure if it would be helpful for you to see the intent and the current zoning language and its original form, if once you see that and see all the restrictions and how they work together, because like you can't see what the setbacks are, you know, like you can't tell, but do you want to see that before?
I think we need to at this next stage.
Yeah, I feel like we should do that before we really go too far forward, because I'm not convinced that you might not want to take some additional zones out or tweak it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So maybe we could, you, you're gonna have a pretty full agenda the next time, so maybe we could just bring you the zones that you talked about tonight with the descriptions in their entirety, so you could walk through the purpose. So then we can kind of mark them up, so you could see, we'll highlight like the most restrictive of the two, so you could see kind of what standards would come into play. And then we could just weed it out a little bit more before you make a decision and we pick zones and start notifying. Does that sound like a good plan? One more stab at it.
I think so.
Uh-huh.
And I don't know if to deal with the, if we would be creating non-conformance, and I understand that it would be an issue for existing establishments with the state licensing, given the tiers and the size. I don't know if one way of helping them to become legal or following the state standards would be perhaps to say any new facility or.
Well, they should both be legal under the current manufacturing and processing standards, because that's what they came in as, so they would be legally non-conforming. I think if you don't change it and they have hopes to expand, it sounds like they're gonna be limited to change whatever tier they are today.
It does seem to me to make sense to align the size of the facilities with the tiers. So like if there's, if there are minor tweaks to the, you know, if you look under additional standards for warehouse and storage facility, B on a lot of three acres or more, a warehouse and storage facility may contain, and then it goes on and it gets specific. Like if we, to the extent that we line up the sizes of the facilities that are allowed with the tiers.
Yeah, can I ask Hillary a que, a question?
Of course.
Um, so with regards to the tiers and the canopy, Cecilia referenced some information that the attorney had provided, that the structure, the canopy is usually a third of the structure size. Do you find that in the business? Or do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it's anywhere from a third to a quarter of the whole facility, especially the flowering canopy.
For the record, the answer is anywhere from a third to a quarter of the flowering size. Or depending on the flowering size, a third to a quarter of the canopy, yeah, okay.
So I have, and I don't know if this is correct, but I have tier one, the maximum canopy size is just 500 square feet. And then if you look at, if that was 30% or like one-third of the building, then the size of that building would be 1,500 square feet. And then for tier two, which is 200, I mean, 2,000 square feet, then, you know, they might, it might be a facility that's up to 6,000. But then to go to tier three, you know, that facility might be just over 20,000 square feet, or might need that size to get that license or to be able to produce that.
Well, we're not gonna have any buildings that big here. Though I guess on the biggest lot, I thought it gets up to 10,000 square feet of, is the most it ever could be, right?
I think, well, I think it'll be easy if we, easier to understand if we come back with the full zoning. You can see the setbacks. We can highlight the standard, because you are gonna have that up there, but you might not have it down there, if we're going.
If you understand the intent, then maybe you can help us.
So i, if you, if you read that MDB, you know, the first, the first building can be 2,500. And for each additional 2,500 square feet of additional, you know, for each acre of land, over three acres, no more than 10,000 gross square feet of gross floor area per lot, so.
Yeah, so there's essentially.
The limit, top limitation.
I thought it's a 10,000 is the biggest you could get, no matter what.
Right.
In that zone.
In that zone, MDB.
Yep, MDA, MDB.
Okay.
Oh, but in the others, there's no such restriction?
There's no, yeah.
There's only the setbacks.
Yeah, there's like buffering.
Gross coverage.
Like those other stuff for everything else, so.
All right, I think you have.
Yes, thank you.
Excellent, all right. Uh, Robert, you've been quiet. Do you have any, anything you want to add to the conversation?
No, this is good. I, I agree that we should just kind of zero in on the, the zones we've identified that, that, you know, our, our, for warehouse, and then, you know, once we delve into more data, we'll just see what makes sense.
Great, all right. Item seven, election of officers for the positions of chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary. Riveting. We do have a quorum, right? We, uh, we have two members who are not here, which throws a slight wrench in things.
You could table it to your next meeting, or you could take action. You have quorum.
Yeah.
Can we nominate you to do it again?
I don't even know how this works, honestly.
Yeah, so you would, somebody would nominate and move to nominate someone, someone would second it, and then.
Nomination, state nominations, close nominations, make a motion and a second, and call a roll call.
And then everybody votes.
Chairperson, vice-chairperson, and, um.
Secretary.
Secretary, thank you.
One at a time, right?
Like, can you vote, can you vote for yourself? Like, can Mitch vote for himself as secretary? Or could I vote for myself as chair?
I'm not voting for myself or any of it.
Typically don't, but it could, yeah, if you want to wait till Robert's in the room and Anna and Wayne are present, that's fine.
You might want to wait for, just for ease of voting.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a, I mean, my only concern could be that if you.
You want to be chair again.
You don't want to hold it off forever, because it's good to fill the roles. You do have some vacancies in the role. But if there's a reason that that person really feels like they can't, and they're not here, then you're just gonna redo it.
Who's the vice chair and the secretary now?
Robert is the vice chair. We don't have a secretary.
Do we need a secretary?
It's a role you need to fill, even though they're really, it's been more honorary.
A no-work job.
I will say, sometimes like by default, if the chair and vice chair haven't been here, they've looked to the secretary to run the meeting. But it's more of an honorary role. We could change that.
Does anybody feel strongly about tabling versus not tabling? Does anybody want, does anybody here want to be the secretary? That might be the deciding factor. Or, let me rephrase that. Is anybody here willing to be the secretary?
Well, for honorary role, that's like, you know, it sounds like a plum job.
We could put secretary on your nameplate if you want.
There you go.
I open nominations for secretary.
Let's wait till everybody's, maybe somebody really wants it, you know.
Do I hear a motion to table?
Yes.
I have a motion to table, still the next meeting.
A second.
Okay, Rosemary, seconds. All in favor? Oh, we have to roll call. Sorry, Andrew?
Yes.
Robert? That's a yes from Robert. Mitch, yes. Rosemary, yes. And I also vote yes. All right, so that is tabled to the next meeting. Agenda eight, persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda items, I.
I'll just note for the record that, uh, I received a late notice that Wayne couldn't be here tonight, so.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
We would have excused him anyway. So I don't think there's anybody here. Well, there's definitely nobody in the room. I doubt the person online wants to comment. So that leaves only item number nine, which is.
Adjourn.
Yes, do I hear a motion?
Move adjourn.
Second.
A second.
All right, all in favor, Mitch?
I am in favor of that.
Rosemary?
Super fun, though, guys.
Yes, Robert?
Yes.
Yes, and I also mo, uh, vote to adjourn. Motion carries. All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you for your leadership.
Recording stopped.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parking is always such a tough one. It's really hard. It was a hard one. Like, it was the first, one of the first things we talked about when I joined the board.
How long have you been on?
Five years?
Oh, long time.
Is that about, I think I joined about a year after I moved to town, and I moved to town in 2016, so I think it's been five years.